This time I'd like to call it a order, the Monday, December 7th, 2015, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. We did not have a work session at this time. We have Mr. Walter Gallup, who is going to provide the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Before he comes forward, I would like to remind everyone that 74 years ago today, 1941, the Japanese attacked Pearl Harbor. We lost, I believe, a couple thousand servicemen and a large number of ships and woke the sleeping giant that was the United States of America. We just need to remember that day. It was before most of our time, but it's a day that will remain important in the history of this country forever. With that, Mr. Gallup, would you please lead us in the invocation? Please stand.
Paul, I was nine years old when that happened. You can do your math. Let us pray. God of our nation and our faith, we celebrate this season as a time to remember the birth of the baby Jesus, and with this birth, the hope of peace on earth and goodwill to all nations. From you, our heavenly Father, came the hope. We have not always been wise and faithful in living this hope in our lives and in our communities and our families. We ask your forgiveness for we have fallen short this year, and instill in us the courage and the will to learn from our mistakes and the commitment to serve you and our country's values of justice and liberty for all. Help us to recognize that we do not have all the answers to our community problems and our country's problems, but we can work together, compromise, negotiate, and even at times recognize that someone else may have a better idea. Give us the patience and open our ears and our minds to your wisdom. This is our prayer to Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gallup. Next on the agenda, at this time, the first meeting in every December is the time that the board reorganizes with a new chairman and a new vice chairman. And at this time, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Scanlon. This is his one time a year he's in charge of the meeting, and he will take us through the nomination and election.
And we'll do this as quickly as we can so I can pass this back over to the board. But as you mentioned, by the North County General Statutes, the first meeting in December, the boards are required to elect their chair and vice chair. I will handle the chairman, and with that, I'll open the floor for nominations for chairman of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Manchin, I'd like to nominate David Griggs for chairman.
I'll second that nomination.
Not hearing any other nominations, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor of David Griggs for chairman of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations to Mr. Griggs. You are now the chairman of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, and with that, I'll pass the agenda back to you for the election of a vice chair.
Well, Mr. Griggs, before we do that, I would like to pass you the gavel.
Is this for defense?
Yes, and I would like to take this time to thank the board members for the past year and the staff, the support. I am ready to move on and allow someone else to be the chairman and look forward to a very good year. Hopefully, Mr. Griggs will get his sea legs pretty quick and take the board and lead us in the next calendar month. And again, I want to thank the board and the staff and the constituents that have supported me. I've gotten a lot of calls and various things from constituents, and I'm very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. First off, I'd like to thank my fellow board members for their support. Hope I can live up to what I will ask, that the board indulge me as I try to get my sea legs, and I would ask that the audience show some patience as I try. It's actually, it's not as easy to run a meeting as Commissioner O'Neill's made it look, and you probably will see that soon. But in any event, the first order of business will be to open nominations for the position of vice chair for the Currituck County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Vance Idlet for vice chair.
Okay.
I'll second that nomination.
Hearing no others, I will ask the board for a vote. Those in favor of Commissioner Idlet as vice chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will, any comments?
As you said, I certainly appreciate the support of our fellow commissioners. I've been here eight years now, or going on eight years, and I will continue to do my best as I have in previous years and bring what experience I have and with the important issues we have coming through the next year in Currituck, and so we have hopefully good outcomes and move our kind forward. And I thank each and every one of you for giving me that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one other comment, just to note, a chairman in county government, certainly for Currituck County, has no special authority, has no additional prerequisites. He's the first among equals, so I certainly look at this to be a collaborative effort and to elicit all the support and advice from my fellow commissioners through the course of this next year. And I feel that we can continue to do some of the good work that we are in the process and have done, and looking forward to bringing to completion some of the things that are near fruition. With that, I'd like to call for a five-minute recess so that we can rearrange the seats. Okay, if we could call the meeting back to order. The first business item we have to do is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I need to add one item under board appointments, under new business E2. I'd like to add the game board appointment that I have, unless there are any objections to that.
Any objections? Hearing none, we'll add the game board appointment. All right. Additionally, the following will be amended to tonight's agenda. Administrative report item A, recognition of the outgoing chairman. Item B, report and discussion on the animal shelter. And in the travel and tourism and development authority, want to add item B to consider hours for operation of the Whalehead Club.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
The first one's going to be the appointment under new business E. It's going to be number two, game board appointment. The second one is going to be for the TDA special meeting, add to item B to consider hours of operation for Whalehead. Hearing no objection and having a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, item passes unanimously. Okay, the next item, next item up will be the item A, the recognition of the outgoing chairman. I'd like to ask my fellow board members to come down with me in the well. Folks, as many of you know, Mr. O'Neill has been a commissioner for 20 years now, and I believe he's served in the capacity as chairman for this board for at least 10 years. That's going to be my excuse why I don't look that good while I'm here tonight. But in any event, I've served for three years. He has been a mentor. He's taught me a lot, and some of it pretty interesting. So, but on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in Currituck County and for the people that he has served, I'd like to present this certificate of appreciation and grateful recognition of your dedication and service to our community as chairman of the Board of Commissioners December 1, 2014 to December 7, 2015. We hereby present Paul O'Neill this certificate of appreciation on the 7th day of December. On behalf of the board, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Again, I'd just like to tell the board, thank you. You're a great group and staff is great, and the folks here in Currituck, there's none finer. I've been to other counties, and what we consider problems, they consider opportunities. So, we have a really nice community we live in, and everyone's important, and I thank you and thank the board.
Put that on the other wall now.
You're running out of walls, aren't you, Paul?
Build a new house. Got to pay for the one I got.
All right. First item we have under public hearings is public hearing in action, PB 15-16, Moyoc Commons, Phase 2.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You had amended your agenda and added an item B under administrative reports, discussion of animal shelter operations.
Indeed. Thank you. All right. We'll look at that. Dan, I believe that is going to be yours, if you would.
Yes, sir. Towards the close of your last meeting, the board heard some commentary that was very concerning about operations or things that have been alleged to be occurring at the animal shelter since the county took over. And since then, we have seen a significant amount of information that's been posted on various different social media sites that has been unfortunately fraught with misinformation and inaccurate information, and it has cast the operation in a dark light that just does not represent what is occurring at our shelter since we've taken over, although we've only been out there six weeks in operating the shelter. So, I have asked if Gina Mauer, our director of animal services, and Melanie Bailey, our animal shelter operator, if they would come, they've had a chance to review the information that's been presented in front of this board, and I've asked them if they would come and present accurate information that reflects what is occurring in our shelter and to answer any questions that this board may have or to address any concerns this board may have. So with that, I'm going to ask Regina and Dawn, if you please, would come forward.
First and foremost, I wanted to report that the Currituck County Animal Services Department had an awesome first month, a very rewarding and awesome first month as a new department. I would like to address with the board and the citizens of Currituck County some of the disturbing, untrue, and malicious comments that were made at the last commissioners' meeting during the public comment section. There is an email that was distributed, was, I believe, an email that Ms. Sykes sent to me on 9/11 in reference to Adopt-a-Thons that I responded to on 9/12. I advised Ms. Sykes that we had no idea when the animal population was going to be transferred to our department, and it was to be determined when the SPCA's contract would end and the shelter transition would take place. I stated that we could follow up after the population and the shelter transition was finalized. I left Adopt-a-Thons on the table, and a copy of that email is available if needed. Another thing that was discussed at the last commissioners' meeting was euthanasia rumors and comments that are completely inaccurate and far from the truth. We had a productive and rewarding month, as we had sent several cats and dogs to rescue, fosters, and we had a great month for adoptions. Melanie, our shelter manager, will follow me with statistics and numbers. I also attended Ailes Bark in the Park and donated five hours of my time as I stood beside Mr. Hall, one of the commissioners. We judged dog contests, and I also donated my time to clean up and load cars at the end of that event. On the day of the last commissioners' meeting, Ms. Sykes visited our shelter to bring over some leftover dog treats from her event that was from the Bark in the Park. She engaged in a walk-through with our shelter manager, Melanie, and I had a lengthy conversation with her on future projects involving the dog park, fundraising, and we also spoke about what services she currently provides to the residents and the animals of Currituck County. As we, the shelter, had been getting some assistance requests from the community, so I wanted to touch space with her and find out exactly what she was doing or what she could give to the citizens. We had requests on dog houses, dog pens, and also spay and neuter requests. I thought it was a very positive and productive discussion, and we currently work with several nonprofit groups, one of them being Cat Rescue of Virginia, Lab Rescue, Currituck County SPCA. They're fostering cat for us as we speak, Feline Hope, and we have a long history with all of these organizations. So at this time, I would like to turn over this portion of the meeting to Melanie, our shelter manager, and she's going to give you some stats and give you some information.
Hi, Melanie. I worked with ALAL, the SPCA, and the county. I transitioned with all of them, and out of all of them, I would say this was probably the easiest one, especially for the animals. Our state inspector passed, our state inspection passed with flying colors. Lisa Carlson came in, and she said we were doing a great job. Dr. Cronigew has also come in on December 3, and he found only that three cats need a medication. Two had an upper respiratory infection, one had an eye infection, possibly entropian, and she already touched on the rescues. We've had 54 adoptions since the county took over, and 25 transferred to rescue, 18 euthanasias. Five were dogs, 13 were cats. Eight of those cats were feral, and the other five were medical reasons. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I do have a question. I believe it was animals. I've seen her. I've seen the sadness in her eyes at times. I've seen her helping animals on a personal level. I know she's doing it for the right reasons. I know she has the, she knows she has a job to do, but I can tell you that there is compassion for animals out there, and I just wanted to commend you for having to do the job you have to do, knowing that you care that much about animals. Thank you. Anything else?
Just have a question about fostering. I know that from time to time, there's in different areas, and I believe we've done it before. I believe ALAL and the SPCA has done fostering. You might want to speak to how people can get involved if they want to foster an animal until it gets adopted. Is that something you could address?
Yeah, they can come up and fill out the foster agreement. Depending on the animal, we don't just foster out any animal. If we're running out of space, that's definitely an option, but they get more recognition, they get seen a lot better at the shelter. And they have a really good life. I mean, it might be an animal shelter, but we treat them like they're ours.
Well, I have another issue, too. If what I've heard is correct, we have, I don't know what the proper term for it is, but I believe we have puppy mills or where people are breeding dogs for fighting. I believe we had an incident here where we had to, I believe it was 20 dogs, maybe?
We haven't gotten the last 13 puppies in yet, but we've been told they're coming.
So that, my point is, is that there is problems with not just unwanted animals, but there's problems with people breeding animals
Yes.
for a specific purpose, and I believe that the board within our legislative authority can address that to some extent. Mr. McCree, can you?
Yes, you do have the authority to regulate animals and their proper care, including so-called puppy mills. We're going to be bringing back to you in the next month or so amendments to the animal control ordinance, and hopefully we can address in that first package of amendments this situation.
I just think the public needs to be aware that it's not just abandoned animals. There's animals out there that are being bred specifically for less than companionship. So, thank you.
I want to come walk a dog. I mean, is it hard to do it? Do I have to call ahead? Do I, you know, tell the folks out there how easy it is?
You just come in, you fill out a volunteer application, and someone will walk you around and show you everything that you need to know.
So I don't have any, I can just come right in in that moment?
Yes.
Fantastic. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment. I mean, it's apparent to me, we have a wonderful new shelter. We have a wonderful staff that is caring and doing the very best job they possibly can. We have volunteer organizations out there who care about the animals. If we can get all these people tied together and everybody will work together for the common good of taking care of the animals, what it should be, then we'll be a great success. The shelter will be a great success, and it'll be a shining light for Currituck County. And that's, you know, that's the only thing that I see. We have plenty of resources if we can just get everything tied together and get people working together for a common goal. I think we'll do good things. Thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you.
I did want to touch a little bit more on your fostering question. Most of the fosters, and it is available, we have foster with intent to adopt, which means if somebody wants to adopt a dog or a cat, not sure that it's going to fit in their family or with their existing animals, we have a two-week period where you can come in and foster with intent to adopt. At the end of that two-week period, by, after the two weeks, you should know whether it's going to be a fit or not. At the end of that two-week period, either you return the animal or you commit to the adoption. And the other foster program we have is mainly for kittens, puppies, pregnant, you know, dogs or older senior dogs that have medical issues, hip issues. So mainly, that's the target as far as the fostering, animals that would not do well in a shelter environment.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I'd add, it makes no difference who's in charge. There's enough work there for everybody, and everybody can play a role, and I think that was my point. Thank you.
Indeed.
And I would just like to add that the last commissioners' meeting, someone accused us of euthanizing kittens. That is absolutely not true. We never euthanize kittens unless they're seriously ill. Never.
Well, the board wants to thank you for coming out. I mean, the last meeting, when I think certainly myself, and I can speak for majority of the commissioners, the things we heard became as a surprise. Certainly, I had not heard it, and I'd only heard good things about the way you're standing up to place and how it's moving forward. And I certainly want to thank you two for coming in and sharing with us this information so that the public does have an opportunity to hear. And the county welcomes whoever who would want to go out there to look at the facility. It's your facility. It belongs to all of Currituck. Every one of us. And thank you all for coming out and bringing us up to speed. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that same note, on December 19, there is an open house at the new shelter from 2:00 to 4:00, so I don't know, Gina, if you want to share anything other than everybody's welcome or?
Everybody's welcome. Please come and meet the little furry babies and take one home.
So the animals, they'll be in, they'll be in the new shelter that day?
No, actually, no. The shelter's going to be empty, but I would encourage everyone and anyone that was, would go to the open house to please stop by the existing shelter and come visit us and volunteer, walk a dog, love a cat, and hopefully adopt.
See the before and afters, right?
Right. See where we're at and see where we're going, and it's a great thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We want to give the general public an opportunity to go through the building and see what their tax dollars has paid for. We determined that it would be stressful on the animals to have that, you know, to have that much activity going in and out, so the animals will be moved over. The plan right now is in the following week, so that over that Christmas holiday and certainly by the first of the year, we will be fully functioning and operating in the new facility.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Would it be appropriate to make a comment?
Well, sure.
Thank you.
Relax, Melanie. I'm going to say something.
Before we start, could you identify yourself and your address?
Yes, sir. My name is Lee Smith, and I'm from Passant County. I hope Mr. O'Neill is not one of those counties where you see opportunity different than him. All my mom's side are from Grandy, so I'm probably related to Mr. O'Neill and some of the Griggs and half of Grandy County. So I feel like I'm home, actually, when I'm from Passant County. What I'd like to comment on, I'm retired Army. I did three tours in Vietnam. I'm retired military police. I'm a dog handler. Reason I'm at Currituck is because of this front row right here. You're not going to find anybody else to run your shelter than what you've got here. They do everything they can. The only thing that I think we're a little bit remiss in with the county is that on some topics, I think Mr. Idlet, I used to go swimming down in Idlet when I was a kid, too. You're probably related to some of them folks.
Nice place.
But any time a governmental agency or body puts in the paper that they got off on the wrong foot and they need help, God bless them, because you don't find that too often. You guys do a good job. But they've asked for help. Instead of these other people, animal lovers and SPCA pointing fingers and making false statements, I think if they really truly cared about saving the lives of these animals, they'd be down there helping. Because trust me, folks, we need some help down there. Like I said, I'm retired Army, so excuse me if I get a little more blunt than these ladies. My tax and diplomacy, that's why I'm not an officer. I do the work. But we need some vehicles down there. We need a vehicle down there, and not so much a pickup truck. They've got a, they have a trailer down there. Lord have mercy. It's pitiful. On the front of you, you have to put a generator, and the generator that we had leaks gas. So you have the propensity to having a rolling torch down the road. I know, like I said, I volunteer. I pull it with my truck over here to some of the adoptions, and I'd like to address that, too. I've come over and I've done some of the adoptions myself, the events. These adoption events work. We've got about 90% adoption rate out of these events since I've been down here. We're kind of a show and tell society. The more, it's like me asking you, sir, to come over and buy a car over the phone. You ain't going to do that. The more we can get these animals out, the more we can get spayed and neutered, and they need monies for spay and neuter, because that's, some places require that they be that way to come out. The more that they're seen, the chances of them being adopted go up greatly. If you don't do that, you might as well get you a good, healthy stack of... If you don't do that, you might as well get you a good, healthy stack of black plastic bags, because you're going to need them. It's just that simple. People, people put in the paper, like you say, euthanized, put to sleep, put down. Folks, you kill them. Tell it like it is. You kill them. I go, I gone over to Passaic County over at the high schools there and gave lectures. And you'd be surprised how many have no idea that, let me ask you, sir, what's the most deadly animal you ever heard of? Take a wild guess.
A bear.
Come on now. I'm standing up in front of all these people. Pardon?
A bear.
A bear? That's a good answer. Good choice. Mr. Islet, what do you think?
Cobra.
That's a good answer. I've been to Vietnam, and I went step out of the hooch one day, and two of them are laying there. And they got my under by detention. No, sir. The most deadly animal, and we have them here by the millions, these damn mosquitoes we got down there. Excuse me. These mosquitoes we got down there. And what happens, these dogs, people who, who don't put their dogs, who have them outside, don't put them on heart prevention, 99% of all the dogs that come into shelter have heartworms. And that's almost a death sentence. So we need, we need to get out, as, as much as I ain't not a big fan of Lisbon City Shelter, I've talked with Ms. Rachel here. We try to get to things like golf tournaments organized down here. I read the paper yesterday where they had a bake sale in Lisbon City. I kind of disagree with you all ago, what you said. I kind of had to hold them home in tongue. We need a lot more people in this county. This, folks, this is y'all's county, not mine. But I'm proud to be down here. I'm proud to be a part of it. But we've got to get a lot more people involved. We've got to get people who can go out and fundraise. I think they made like 150 bucks off this cake sale they had, or bake sale they had down on Main Street. That's 150 more than what they didn't have. Chrome Pony, they gave them 150. Where's the people down here doing that? I haven't seen it since I've been here. I've seen two or three people come by and volunteer. Anytime you want to take that suit off, you come on down, sir, I'll walk with you. I'll walk any dog down there. I thought I was a reasonably tough individual. I got three tours in Vietnam. I've seen some atrocities when I was in Vietnam. Folks, I couldn't do it. I couldn't do what, what has to be done right here. I think the people who turn these dogs in, who don't take care of them, should be made to stand there when they put these dogs down. I've got no patience for them. These puppy mills, these people that fight them. I saw a lady on the news the other night. She had a retriever taped his mouth shut. So this is what you do when you don't shut up. She got 150 days. I wish they gave her 550 days. The laws of North Carolina have changed. They've gotten tougher, and I'm all for it. Let me tell you, if you mistreat a defenseless animal or a small child, you've got no problems hurting anybody else. And I have no patience with you. You can get me hot in a minute.
Thank you, sir. One of the things I think to point out is we're in the process of standing up an advisory board that will serve as part of its collateral functions, just the issues that you were talking through a little earlier about raising money and seeking those events that you were pointing out that maybe we have been deficient in in the past. So that's, so that's, that's a work in progress.
How about a vehicle, too? We need a vehicle.
Well, I'll ask the county manager to look at-
It don't have to be a brand-new, a van, or one of these IPCA old vans or something we can get around into.
We have on occasion, we'll have surplus vehicles that, that the sheriff's department or other departments will turn, and we can look at that.
We are in the process right now of actually surplusing a Dodge Durango to the animal shelter as we speak.
Good.
And that's good, but you can't get so many of them in there. And we'll take anything we get. But, you know, we're a sportsman's paradise down here. We need to take care of these animals a little better than we're doing.
Well, we certainly appreciate your heartfelt comments, and thank you so much for coming up. Just one question. Did you spend any time at Fort McLoughlin?
Alabama, yes, sir.
Okay. I did, too.
Just prior to going to Vietnam.
Yeah, I spent there five months via Bachelor's Officers' Corps. I was going through CIA's interrogation school, and that's where, if you've ever heard of Dodd-Pie, that's where it's, they have it there. But interesting place. But thank you for your service-
Thank you, sir.
...to this country. And thank you for your comments.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for letting me have this opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. If we could move on now to-
Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ben. May I respond for just a second, please?
Uh-
Just for just a moment.
Okay. In fairness, but now, instead of this turning to a public comment at this time, I think I will ask that Ginger, that you'll be the last, and if we need any further comment or people want to speak, we can wait till the proper time at the end of the meeting for public comment. But-
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm Ginger Sykes with Animal Lovers Assistance League. Live at 111 Mallard Drive. And some of you probably received, if you've had time to check your emails today, an email. I didn't have every commissioner's address, so some of you may not yet have gotten it, but I'll work on that when I get home. Today, we sent to Dr. Ronald Cronigew, the veterinarian that I understand is providing spayed and neuter service and veterinary care at the new shelter. And we sent copies to Mr. Scanlon and to most of the commissioners, offering to help fund the equipment in the new spayed and neuter clinic with $10,000 that we have that was donated specifically for that by Bob Kohler in honor and memory of his beloved wife, Phyllis, who is also a long-term member of our board. And so we have offered that, and we've asked Dr. Cronigew if he would please recommend the equipment. And then I would like to communicate with Mr. Scanlon on where and when he would like to have the equipment delivered to the new shelter. Also, we, animal lovers, are available to help with adopt-a-thons. And that was the email that I gave you, I believe, about two weeks ago. And I think all of you saw copies of it. And we were offering to do that when the shelter was taken over by the county. And we are still very much willing to help with that if you just give us a little heads up and a little notice. We're trying to help. We're trying to make things work successfully as much as we can. Thank you so much.
And thank you. And I did get that email, and that's, that's very generous. And certainly it was generous, generous donation by, by Mr. Kohler in memory of his late wife. And we will appropriately memorialize that.
Good.
And thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify those points.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ginger.
All right. Any other, any other comments before we move on to our public hearing?
I just got one question for the manager regarding the donation for the funds for the euthanasia. With the progress of the shelter moving forward, I mean, has all the, because of the timeframe, hasn't everything already been acquired or purchased? Or can you go over that? I mean, I know, I know Ms. Sykes had said she'd purchased the equipment, but I think we had to move it forward, didn't we?
Yes, sir. In fact, Mr. Kohler approached me when we had the ribbon cutting at the soccer fields, which was a year, year, over a year ago, and had advised us that he had made a contribution on behalf of his wife. The money never came forward at that time. So staff went and met with Dr. Cronigew already, and we reviewed with him the, the medical space to get his input into his recommendation of what that space should look like. He actually advised us that he would prefer that we had more of an examining room space than, than a, a clinical space, so that any services, we do have a contract with him for spayed and neuter services. He prefers that to happen actually in his office, where he has the necessary equipment, x-ray equipment, oxygen, and the various different things you need to provide surgical care. So he's asked if we would outfit the, this space more as an examining room. He gave us that list of equipment that he would recommend. We have acquired that, and it is actually in the building as we are right now. I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Kohler last week, who, and I passed on to him that we greatly appreciated his generosity. But because of delays, that we did move forward with equipping that room. And it was his suggestion that he either reimburse us for that, or that he would create a foundation for one of our high school students that had any interest in going into veterinary services, perhaps that could offer some kind of a scholarship program. And so we're waiting to hear back from him, you know, which direction and what course he would like to do. And also, in, in, in closing on that, we will be looking to recognize Ms. Kohler, and we will put some kind of a placard or something in that room, noticing that the generous gifts of the Kohlers is what paid for the equipment that is in that vet movement. So all of that is actually in place and moving forward.
Very good. Anything? All right. We will now move on to public hearings. The first item will be public hearing in action on PB 15-16, Moyoc Commons, Phase 2. Request for conditional rezoning of 50.65 acres from agricultural to conditional single-family mainland for property located at the western terminus of Moyoc Commons Drive behind the Food Line Shopping Center, Moyoc, Moyoc Township. And with that, Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request is for a conditional zoning from agricultural to single-family mainland, as you just referenced. The property you can see on the, on the map is located just west of the Moyoc Commons Shopping Center, which is where the Food Line property is in Moyoc. And of course, it abuts the Quell Run subdivision to the east. You can see the two parcels that comprise this request that are approximately 50 acres. There's another parcel just to the east of those two parcels. It's already been zoned at a previous, by a previous board to conditional district, single-family mainland. So this request is for the same zoning district, just expanding that to basically, if approved, would have all 75 acres of land in this area rezoned, conditional district, single-family mainland. As you can see on the map, the majority of the residential subdivisions that abut this are already zoned, single-family mainland. Of note, they tend to be a larger lot development pattern in those. And of course, to the east, you see the Moyoc Commons Shopping Center and a number of other properties that are zoned, general business or commercial. This property's designated full service in the 2006 land use plan. It is also designated full service in the Moyoc Small Area Plan. Want to take a second to give some, elaborate on what those designations mean, because the board knows what the staff usually uses for making recommendations primarily is the land use plan recommendations. The full-service area, as you can see, the property's designated generally is a designation where the county has found the property to be more suitable for development. So we usually look at these areas as, as areas you'll see residential and even commercial growth in the future. The full-service area typically allows, in the land use plan, three to four units per acre, particularly when central sewer and water is available. This particular request does propose a hook to the county's wastewater and water systems. Additionally, the land use, 2006 land use plan promotes developments that provide open space and cluster homes and provide compact development patterns, particularly when adjoining a mixture of different types of uses. In this particular case, you've got properties that abut commercial area, commercially zoned areas. And you'll see on the conceptual development plan in a second that it is proposing a compact development style. The Moyoc Small Area Plan also designates this area as full service. And in that, in that small area plan, the full service areas are typically focal points in the community where high amounts of activity occur. In that plan, the, it anticipated full service densities would range from one and a half units per acre to three. This particular request is two units per acre. So it falls within the recommended density allowances of the land use plan and the Moyoc Small Area Plan. Another thing that's in the Moyoc Small Area Plan was recommendations for transportation, interconnectivity, which you'll see in a map in a second. This, this project does propose connections to adjoining properties. One thing I want to point out, and I want to elaborate on a little further in my presentation, is the Small Area Plan also promotes compatibility between new developments and existing developments. The Moyoc Small Area Plan recommends that compatibility be achieved through larger setbacks, larger lot sizes, landscaped or buffering strips, transition zones, fencing, screening, density step downs, et cetera. So that is one of the recommendations included in the Small Area Plan. I'm going to show the color version of the plan. In this particular request, you can see the property again is about 50 acres in size. This is a conditional zoning. As part of that requirement, or that zoning process, they're required to submit a conceptual development plan that gives the board and the community a chance to see what the development would look like if approved. Per conditional zoning, if it is approved, they're required to follow this conceptual development plan. So you could have minor deviations, but if this does move forward, what you see is basically what you would get with a development request. Utilities provided to this, or this application proposes connect to the county water and sewer systems. Transportation, they will have access to Carrot Oak Highway through Moyoc Commons Drive, which goes through the shopping center. They're also proposing access to Puddin Ridge Road. Through a right of way, you can see that extends to the left of the development on this particular map. And then they're also proposing connectivity to East White Pond Road, which is a road in the Quell Run subdivision. And of course, you can see on this particular map, there's a stub street to the property to the right side, which is under cultivation now and zoned agricultural. But should that ever develop at some point in the future, this would provide connectivity to that parcel as well. So it actually connects in four directions. The plan specifically is on 27, or 25 acres. It's 100 single-family dwelling units, or, excuse me, 50 acres, just over 50 acres. It's 100 single-family dwelling units. As I mentioned earlier, the property that adjoins its 27 acres, and that included 55 units. If you look closely, and hopefully you can see, you can see the outline of the previously approved development that adjoins this on the 27-acre tract of land. The density of this particular request tonight is 1.97 units per acre. They're providing 40% open space, which is required in this development option. One thing I'll note is, is to try to meet or to comply with the Moyoc Small Area Plan. You can see they've added 11 lots on the shared property line with the Quell Run subdivisions. Those 11 lots are approximately 20,000 square feet in size, which is larger than the lot size for the remaining lots. They also took majority of that property line that adjoins with Quell Run and put a lot of that into open space. And then, of course, there is a buffer that they're proposing between those 11 lots and the existing lots in the Quell Run subdivision. So they have made an effort in their planned layout to try and provide some transition between the existing Quell Run subdivision and their proposed development. This is a conditional zoning request, and what that does is it allows the applicant to propose conditions on their zoning. So in addition to the conceptual development plan, they're proposing that the minimum 25-foot buffer be provided on the shared property line with Quell Run subdivision. So that will be a requirement if approved. They're proposing that stormwater runoff be detained on site below a predeveloped two-year storm event, which is essentially what the ordinance requires for stormwater management. And then they're proposing all residential dwellings be constructed either with crawl space or on raised slabs with finished floor at least 16 inches above the outside ground grade. What that does is that ensures that the properties have some sort of elevation above any kind of storm event to minimize flooding concerns. One thing we do require is for community meetings to be conducted prior to submittal of a conditional zoning application. The developer did hold two community meetings, one on July of 2015, July 20th, and another on July 27th at the Moyoc Library. Those were attended by citizens, and most of the questions and comments raised at those meetings included concerns with drainage, connection to the Quell Run subdivision, urbanization of Moyoc, quality of the housing, and traffic concerns. And one, and before, and well, actually, what I'll do is I'll move into the technical review committee recommendation at this point. The TRC has reviewed this application, and the staff is recommending conditional approval of this rezoning request. That, that recommendation is based on not only consistency with the goals, objectives, and policies of the land use plan, but with the, that it is compatible with existing proposed uses surrounding the land. And that is that it's single-family that adjoins, single-family. And of course, to the east of this, you have the Moyoc Commons Shopping Center. So this is, from staff's perspective, somewhat of a transition from the commercial uses to a higher-density residential development to a lower-density existing development. And finally, that this is the appropriate zoning district and use for this land that's, that's basically developed on all three sides. Staff would note that part of the conditional recommendation also includes two conditions that staff is recommending be included as part of the approval of this request. that staff is recommending be included as part of the approval of this request. One is that a preliminary drainage impact study be provided by the developer and approved by the county prior to submittal of the preliminary plat, the preliminary subdivision plat. So if the rezoning were approved tonight, the next step would be to submit a preliminary plat. Staff is asking a condition be added that prior to submitting that preliminary plat, a preliminary drainage analysis is done. So at the time of preliminary plat, I think there'll be a better understanding of what the real engineering drainage impacts of this development may be. I'll note on that condition that that was also a condition of approval on the first rezoning that attaches to this or joins this request. So it is a similar condition from the previous rezoning. Additionally, another staff condition is that the curbing at the roundabout, you can see there's a roundabout that enters, uses the entry feature for this property from the Puddin Ridge Road connection, that the curbing at the roundabout be a low-level ridable curbing, that's so the fire trucks can get over the roundabout. Staff would recommend that these two conditions be added as part of any approval of this request. I will note that under North Carolina law, not only does the board have to agree to those conditions, but the applicant does as well in order for those to be included as part of the request. One other thing that's a little, probably not typical, but one thing that we've done, the staff, is this, one of the big issues that comes up frequently on this particular request is drainage and stormwater concerns. And one thing that is a basis for the condition that staff's recommending about the preliminary drainage study, we actually asked the consultant hired by the Moyoc Watershed Improvement District to come tonight and give an overview of his review of the application. So as part of the review of this in preparation for this meeting, we did engage the consultant for the Watershed Improvement District to do a review and provide some comments. I'm going to ask him to come forward and give the board an overview of his findings on some of the drainage impacts and concerns that may exist with this project. I think that will give some good context, not only for the board's consideration tonight, but also for the community as well. And before I bring Mr. Andy Dill up to go over that information, I want to note the planning board heard this request, and they did recommend a, well, excuse me, they voted or they made a motion for approval with a condition that the open space remain in the wooded state and not be cleared. However, that motion for approval received a 4-4 vote, and under Planning Board Rules of Procedure, that moves forward as a recommendation for denial. So the planning board recommendation for this is for denial. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Andy Dill to come forward on behalf of the Watershed Improvement District and provide a brief overview of some of his findings related to drainage and stormwater on this conditional zoning request.
Good afternoon, good evening, Board. My name's Andy Dill. I'm with Dill Engineering. Excuse me. In 2009, I was with Quabell and Associates, and working with Quabell was hired by the Drainage District to perform a drainage study of the Moyoc Commons area. Do we have the map showing the ditches? Okay. Essentially, this area that we all know has had drainage problems in the past was, is drained by a network of ditches. And primarily, we were able to identify six ditches. Three of them work in an interconnected manner, ditches one, five, and six, and ditches two, three, and four are somewhat isolated. There's a bit of a connection between four and one, but it seems to stay, the drainage tends to stay isolated except in an extreme case. Our parcels that are the subject parcels are the two that are shown immediately north of ditch five. Let's see the pointer there. When we ran the study, the timing was perfect. We were hired to do the study right before Tropical Storm Ida hit, and so I was able to come up here and run around with Mike Doxy during Tropical Storm Ida and see the flooding in action. And what we saw was Quail Run, a number of the roads were underwater. The ditch crossing of Puddin Ridge Road for ditch five was flowing over the road, and there was flooding in the Moyoc Commons commercial area. So we did our surveys. We constructed the model, and the model actually showed us what we saw with Ida. So we have fairly high confidence in the model. We showed that ditch five was over capacity. Ditch, Quail Run, ditch six backed up to the point in terms of elevation that it spilled over into Quail Run, and Quail Run acted basically as a stormwater pond for ditch six. And Moyoc Commons commercial area had some drainage problems going out to ditch one. The task at the time with that drainage study was to identify the biggest bang for our buck in terms of improvements to the drainage system back there. What we've determined was that improvements to ditch six actually gave us the greatest impact to the system, that we could, by doing certain improvements on ditch six, we could actually lower the water level in ditch five by up to a foot. The county has, or the Drainage District has been, you know, they bring in their money on an annual basis. They've been scheduling improvements. I know a culvert has been added under Puddin Ridge Road. There have been improvements made, but we're far from fixed there. The concern with doing any sort of development in this area, because it's already flooding, is, of course, how do we impact the flooding downstream? And in this case, it's particularly complicated because downstream could be ditch one, ditch five, or ditch six. During a large storm, there are areas of ditch one that actually flow one direction for a while and then flow the other direction for a while. So it's not a simple drainage problem, and our stormwater ordinance doesn't even really simply address development in an area like this. Ditch four, for me as an engineer, if I was asked to develop the two subject parcels, my first look would be to ditch four, and can we actually drain to ditch four and remove ourselves from ditch five and ditch six where the biggest problems were? As for showing here. The ordinance actually directs the engineer, the stormwater ordinance actually directs the engineer, to honor existing drainage patterns, which would mean for those two parcels, we would, after construction, try to drain them to ditch five. Because of the complexity of the system and because the storm, there's an existing stormwater problem in this area, and the engineering of the stormwater system really is one of the critical questions that needs to be answered. I do think it's justified to ask that the developer put the energy into answering his stormwater questions first. And I know that that was a requirement on the rezoning for the 25, 27-acre parcel that's on the north end of these three. It would be appropriate for these two. I also would ask the board, I'm not sure exactly how this gets incorporated into the approval, but if the board is inclined to approve the rezoning, I would ask the board to require the, how do I phrase this? The simple requirements in the stormwater ordinance of either meeting the two-year, the post-construction from the 10-year can't exceed the pre-construction flows from the two-year, or the outfall can't, the elevation of stormwater in the outfall can't be raised. The stormwater ordinance says either or. Really, a more appropriate requirement here would be an and, because I do think when the engineer runs the numbers, that it's going to make the most sense to drain this area to ditch four. And when you do that, you're bringing new area into ditch four, and really to ensure that ditch four is protected, you need to answer both of those questions. The big, one big positive, if that is the answer, and if that is the direction the developer goes, is that will remove significant acreage from the ditch five, ditch six, and ditch one system, which will help in a large storm event. That water won't be going to that system. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you'd have for me, or if during discussion you have any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I do. At one. Mr. Dill, all of these ditches, where's the outfall?
All of them end up in Shingle Landing Creek.
Okay. So as you know, and we all know, that Shingle Landing Creek is a wind-controlled body of water. And generally, when we have storm events, a lot of times, we're talking northeast winds for days on end. I guess my question is, is there sufficient capacity, stormwater capacity, on site to hold this water? Because for days, it's not going anywhere. It's when the sound is higher than the ditches, flooding is coming this way instead of going that way, no matter what. I mean, it's going to equalize itself. So it's got to be held somewheres until the wind-controlled tides push the sound water out far enough, sound drops, then the water flows. And it works that way throughout the county. It's just not here. It's everywhere in the county. That's how the stormwater issues work. Now, it's all in the same way, but...
What the model showed was that even when we don't have Shingle Landing Creek controlling what's hap, the drainage out of this drainage area, that we have a flooding issue. It's even when we have, we have an adequate outfall to Shingle Landing Creek in terms of elevation, we still have those restrictions that are bottlenecking. We were still topping the road at Puddin Ridge Road. We were still backing up into Quail Run subdivision. So the, the question you're asking is one that we have to, we ultimately have to take a step back and say, how far do we go? It's kind of the question of, do you design your stormwater system to handle a five-year storm, the 10-year storm, or the 100-year storm, or the 500-year storm? Classically, and the way that drainage rules work throughout this county and through the other counties in the area where they have a stormwater quantity requirement, flood control requirement, it is about pre-construction flow and post-construction flow. So if there was a problem that was created by a wind tide, you have to assure that your development isn't going to make that problem worse. And the county's two-year peak flow versus 10-year peak flow requirement really does address that, and it is the most restrictive requirement in the region. So yes, Shingle Landing Creek still floods the whole area, but even when Shingle Landing Creek isn't, right now, we have a flooding problem. Your ordinance with the two-year and the 10-year requirement addresses that for this development. What I was asking in terms of the requirements, where I was saying, the two-year, 10-year, and the no increase in outfall elevation is really about protecting ditch four and the dynamics of ditch four into the future.
And the flooding issue is not just relevant to this property. I'm not, it's to the whole Moyoc area. It's just, that's how it is.
I guess, Mr. Dill, here's one of the questions I have. If we already have acknowledged we have a flooding issue, and if the rules that the county has basically say any additional water generated or has to be retained on site of this subdivision, so the expectation that I have is that the flooding's not going to get any better, right? Possibly?
It's, without doing the engineering, it's just talking...
Got it.
...perspectively. Perspectively, the flooding, the flood situation, if this is designed to drain to ditch four and ditch four is properly protected, the flooding situation associated with ditches one, five, and six will get marginally better. You're taking 40, 35, 40 acres of drainage area out of that system. And right now, there is a lot of runoff that comes from those fields and even the wooded areas, and that's a function of the soil type. We have fairly poor soils here.
So if we adopt, because I know all of the ditches in Keratuck, especially Moyoc, are maintained pretty darn well. You know, I guess my raging concern is now we're contributing another potentially 100 homes. I drive that road. I know, I mean, I can always tell what kind of a day we're having by the Moyoc, by the Foodline parking lot and how much water's in the parking lot. And, you know, looking at the outflow of the traffic that would be coming out of that neighborhood into the flooding that is now existing, if we can't improve, my concern is unless we do something radical to improve the flooding in that area, what in essence I see we're doing is contributing another 100 homes to trying to navigate the un-navigable waterways.
Yeah. If you're speaking to adding people to the system and the cars to the system, that's a different issue than really what I'm trying to...
Understood.
...address, speaking to stormwater. The stormwater problem here, and there are still improvements that can be made, that can be done in terms of the district. There are quite a few improvements that will improve the situation still significantly, but that costs money, it costs time.
And the county's, the county's been talking about this for...
Right.
...a while.
And it requires easements as well to, you know, these are, these are open, natural ditches. But in terms of the, in terms of adding the people, yes, you're adding the people. Will any reasonable stormwater measure that we ask the developer to do here fix the drainage district? It won't. The real, as an engineer who does a lot of design for development, really, the charge is do no harm. It's make sure that what you're doing isn't going to tax the system that's there anymore. Keratuck's ordinance takes it a step further to actually, with the two-year, 10-year requirement, you are improving the situation. It's just, without running the numbers, you don't know how much.
Understood.
And this is 50 acres within a 1,600-acre drainage area.
And then, here's my final question, my final question. Is engineering always correct? And my concern is, with stormwater, by the time it becomes obvious to us whether or not we are on a winning plan, it's too late. And that's a marginal situation to me. I was not made to generate applause, but my concern is, you know, we know that area is low. I was on the Board of Adjustments, and there were some concerns back in the day, you know, and some of the improvements that came in, including the Foodline. And, you know, I am concerned for the folks that have to live, work, and transit that area, that I don't know that we have the solution. And my concern is, by the time we figure out whether or not that's going to work, you know, anyway, that's all I have.
To answer your question, obviously, engineers can make, engineers can make mistakes. It's, we, you know, all of us employ checks and balances to avoid that. It can happen. Keratuck County hired me to review the drainage plan for the first parcel here because they recognized that it was a complex system. I would imagine that I would also be involved in reviewing the next two as well if they were to move forward. The tools that we have for analyzing what's happening are pretty advanced now. And as I said, it was really fortunate, I was able to be out here during Tropical Storm Ida, and what the model showed was exactly what I was seeing on the ground. And so that gave me a sense of confidence in what I was, what I was getting.
Thank you.
My single point a while ago, even in Tropical Storm Ida, you had wind directions that changed, and you had water levels in the sound that went from here to here in matters of hours. So depending on what time you were looking at that event and making your determination gives you the data that you get at that point in time. I mean, now, if you were there through that whole period and was watching this thing through a full cycle of periods, I mean, those winds, as a storm comes ashore, come around.
Right. But my point in that was that when the wind has Shingle Landing Creek completely backed up...
Right.
...to the elevation, that if we had, we had canals going from Quail Run to Shingle Landing Creek, and it's still backed up into Quail Run, the problem isn't a stormwater problem at that point, it's an elevation problem.
That was my point.
It's, and that's not something that we can reasonably address. What I found and what the model showed, and what I was asked to study, was the stormwater issue, and we do have a stormwater issue there, and conveyances that can be improved to improve that situation.
So in essence, we have a flooding issue that there's no solution to from a big...
If it's generated from stormwater, we do have solutions, or we can make it better. If it's generated by wind, the only answer is to go up.
Makes no difference. Flooding is flooding, no matter where it comes from, from the sky or from the sound.
Mr. Chair, just got a quick question and clarification. Looking at the map up there, am I to assume that ditch four, there's a red line between that and one, it doesn't connect there, or there's a blockage, or? connect there, or there's a blockage, or?
There, the, ditch four peters out in the woods there. And so it's, it's actually closer to our red arrow there. So there are a portion of these, of these three parcels that flows back towards ditch one, or blows over to ditch four and then over to ditch one. There's essentially a high point in ditch four. And it's approximately where our red arrow is, is drawn there.
Okay. And your recommendation is to direct all this into ditch four?
Well, it's, I fall short of saying it's my recommendation. I don't, I haven't engineered this.
Okay.
It's the first place I would look. Knowing what I'd do if I was designing this, that is where I would look to go. And ditch four is being improved for the parcel that's, that's already been rezoned. And they, you wouldn't drain our, these two new parcels over into the natural ditch as it is now. You would, it's, I think they actually had it drawn. They had ponds on the north end, yeah, ponds on the north end. You drain using your, your new conveyances within the subdivision up into those ponds, and then over to your outfalls. So, you know, the, the high point, if you look at this graphic, the high point would be approximate, a little to the, to the right of Moyoc Commons Drive there, in, in that ditch four. You're not draining this over into that part of ditch four. You're draining it down into that, that upper left-hand corner of our, of what's drawn here.
Okay. And just to, what Commissioner Beaumont has addressed, I have walked a lot of those neighborhoods and some of those homes and the backyards. And even when the rain has been gone for weeks, I mean, it felt like I was just walking through a sponge at times in there. So, I mean, the drainage, I mean, it is a concern. Thank you.
I have a question for you. You said that the first parcel that was zoned, that improvements have been made to ditch four. What kind of improvements?
They've been, that, part of their design is that improvements are being made to ditch four. And what they're actually doing is piping the runoff from that, that development down the ditch four corridor and underneath Puddin Ridge Road, and then daylighting on the other side of Puddin Ridge Road.
Mr. Woody, would you pull that ditch drawn back up? Kind of show me what, what you're referring to that's recommended, or not your recommendation, but the improvements that have been?
What, what they've proposed, and I believe it's gone through TRC, is a pipe that goes from approximately where your red dot is now, down under Puddin Ridge Road. And that way, they were able to avoid the, the restrictions that, that you have with the natural ditch four there.
And by doing so, you're saying that if we can do that, and we do some other improvements to ditch four, that will help one and five?
What it will do is remove water from the one, five, and six system.
It's redirecting it.
Right. And then the question comes up, you know, five years, 10 years, 20 years, if something isn't working, who pays to fix it? I know that's not your question, but that's a question that a lot of people ask.
Right, right. It's, I mean, this, the tools that, that we use, the model and so forth that I used for this grid, is advanced. The science behind it isn't. This is ditch flow and pipe flow, and it's stuff that we know well. If the calculations are done properly and stuff is main, stuff is installed the way it's designed and is maintained properly, then it will function properly.
And so far, based on your thing in 2011, I think with the thing, you're saying that the subdivision will do no harm, but it will actually improve the, the water level a little bit?
If ditch four can be improved to be adequate in conjunction with storage and treatment, storage requirements within the subdivision on these two parcels that are proposed to be rezoned, if that scenario can be engineered properly and put in properly, then you've removed probably 35 acres or so from the ditch one, five, and six system. Water that runs off into that system now won't be running off into that system in the future. It'll, would be retained on-site and then released into the ditch four system at a rate that, that meets the 10-year versus two-year requirement of the Currituck ordinance.
Okay, I lied. Which ditch is, is running over Puddin Ridge?
Ditch five.
Okay, so if four is improved, it'll pull water from ditches one, five, and six?
If the, the two parcels that are in question.
Right.
Right now, a significant part of those parcels flow to runoff to ditches one, five, and six. Those are interconnected. They all function together.
That's the, the lower two and the one on the side?
Correct. So if they incorporate a design that's, that brings that water all to their northeast, northwest corner, and then utilizes ditch four, then that's water that was running off into ditches five, six, and one, that won't be running off into ditches five, six, and one in the future.
And it's expected that ditch four could handle the excess capacity produced by that? Got it.
Developers.
If, if then, got it.
And Mr. Chairman, I would also tell the board that the developers, has an engineer here on his behalf as well, that may be able to answer some of these questions with more specificity.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question about ditch one. Okay, ditch one runs underneath 168, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then it drains into the ditch that goes along the railroad track heading north, correct?
It goes under the railroad track and continues to the northeast.
Okay, now there, okay. And then from the west, I mean, from the east, all the way to the end of the green arrow, the green line, that goes to where?
Oh.
So is that draining?
Ultimately, that's all going to Shingle Landing Creek.
And that's, and is that draining westward to the same ditch that we're draining eastward to?
Yeah. All of that comes together. It's, I'm, you can't see my perspective. If you...
But they both come together where the railroad track is. Is that what you're saying?
If I could, that ditch goes under 168. It goes on, under Sawyer Town Road and continues to move in, I guess, eastward direction, over towards where the cell tower is, where it drains into a, a slough there, and goes over Tulsa Creek Road out by Mac Jones Road, is where ditch one is terminating. It's not terminating in the ditch on the other side of 168. It goes beyond that.
The reason I'm asking is that ditch on 168, years ago, was always full of water. Now it's dry a lot of times. When we, even when we have these events, it doesn't move the water that it used to. Why?
From a, when I was getting the tour by Mike Doxy, when we were out there during Tropical Storm Ida, and there was, was barely any water in it then, apparently, when they did one of the rounds of improvements on 168, they basically cut off that ditch from, from any sort of feeding source. So there's a little bit of localized drainage immediately around it that goes into it, but that's it. It's not part of the conveyance system going on.
Wouldn't it make sense, irregardless of what's going on here tonight, that that ditch be a part of the conveyance system as it used to be?
I can't answer that question, sitting right here, because I, I don't know. I haven't followed that ditch both directions.
I mean, that ditch was cut that size for a reason.
It is, yeah. It is a big ditch.
And not used anymore since they put in the widening of 168. There's a reason it's not being used, because they tried to drain water uphill, and it doesn't work. It still doesn't work.
If it could be connected through Shingle Landing Creek and interconnected to ditch one, and if the, if there wasn't a great big hump in the middle of it, then it would provide some relief for ditch one, because it would just be another outlet point.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, any other questions? I, I have one, and it's probably going to be, you've addressed it fragmented, in fragments. But earlier on, you said the stormwater ordinance that we have doesn't actually address the drainage issues in this area. This area being where the applicant is before us tonight, or are you talking about Moyoc in general? Or could you clarify that? And additionally, I think I've heard several points that you have made about different issues, whether they be wind versus stormwater, whether they be elevation versus elevation issues, whether they be bottlenecks that you referred to, easement issues. Could you summarize, when you, I guess, generally spoke to, the stormwater ordinance we have does not address the issues in this, in this area?
Specifically, I was referring to the concept that, that has been, that we've discussed, of taking a drainage area that flow, that has one outlet and moving its outlet. The ordinance doesn't really address that, because the ordinance envisions, we have 50 acres draining into Point A, and we need to balance pre-construction and post-construction conditions for Point A. What we're doing is we're taking 50 acres, and we're going to drain it to Point B. And Point A is not our analysis point. And so it's the, it's a bit of a unique situation in that we're, we're in between outfalls, basically. And we're, we're, one outfall is more favorable than the other in terms of, of how it might be able to accept the runoff. The ordinance doesn't really address that. It, with the ordinance, if you're flowing to the same outfall, then the either-or requirement makes sense. But once we've moved outfalls, we really need to check both boxes. We need to say, we aren't putting any more water into it, and we're not raising the water level in it. And the other part of your question?
It, it was, when you were saying you were addressing other issues that would have an impact, bottlenecks, you were talking easement issues. I, I, I think what we know, or at least during my time on this board, is that it's a complex issue, and it's multifaceted. And it, and it does, I'm just trying to highlight your comment, that it's more than just stormwater. It's how that stormwater is affected by bottlenecks or by restricted ditches, that maybe there's difficulty if, in getting access to, to widen them and so forth. That's what I was trying to open a dialogue.
It's, it's one of the challenges of the terrain that we live in. In so many areas away from the coast, your waterways somewhat maintain themselves. We have a system where water moves very slowly. It sits. Our ditches are flat. They're interconnected. And so it's, their conveyance capability gets choked up over time. And it's something we need to maintain. It's, in a broader sense, it's really a public services issue. And it's, you know, similar to what the Moyoc Drainage District here, do we need a larger public services district or a larger public services movement to address the maintenance of these things? Because, you know, they've started out as mosquito ditches and farm ditches. And we, the people who owned them maintained them. And we've gotten away from that. And really, it's, you know, who's responsible for the terminal end of, of ditch six when it's draining 1,000 acres? And, you know, probably have 80 or 90 different property owners coming into it. It's, there's no easy way to, to remove its responsibility if we are going to maintain it from government. And so it's, I'm not one to advocate for, for government systems, but this is a case where they're, the only time that it really works keeping it in private hands is if private hands are developing all of your, your drainage basin. And we don't have that happening here.
Anything additional? Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Woody. Do we have?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
That concludes staff, staff's presentation.
All right. I want to ask the applicant to come forward and/or the applicant's representatives, identify yourself and your address.
Proceed.
Mr. Chairman, you'll need to open the public hearing before they proceed with their presentation.
Okay. I will open the public hearing now and request applicant come forward to speak to PB 1516 and/or the applicant's representatives. You owe me.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Browning, and I'm with Youngblood Tyler &amp; Associates. This is my partner, Adam Werner. He's also with Youngblood Tyler &amp; Associates. And we are representing Moyoc Commercial Properties on this project. We, we had a small presentation we were going to go through. Most of, most of that's been said by the director here and, and Mr. Deal. So I'm going to kind of skip a few things. I'll let you, in the first part, we were just showing where the project is. We're located in the small area plan. We were a full-service area. We first started working on this project probably back in May of this year. We came down and had a pre-application meeting, I think it was in June, with staff. We saw this, we, we looked at the land use plan. We saw the full-service area. We saw the availability of public water and sewer. We saw an area where the county appeared to want growth. So with the developer, we sat down and we prepared a couple plans. And the first of which, I mean, these were, were more dense. They, they fell within the requirements of the full-service area. They met the small area plan. But the first plan, we all, we had a combination of a PDR and a PDM, which was a planned development residential with some planned development multi, multi-use, which we combined some single and multifamily. We had a commercial component. We had a, hit the next one. We had, we did another plan where we just did a total PDR, planned development residential. And we kind of, we had 190 single-family lots. We, we met all the requirements of those zoning, zoning districts. We, we took those plans, and we showed them to the county. We had a couple community meetings. They mentioned, they were both back in July. We went in, we went into the meetings, and some things kind of came up that surprised. You know, the first thing, obviously, a lot, most we do is density. Everyone's concerned about the density. We added density, traffic, you know. But the flooding kind of caught us, caught me by surprise, to be honest. Hey, man, we're at the beach, you know, it's supposed to be sand. It's supposed to drain. And so then we started looking into those issues. And, and it was, it was a big problem. And that seemed to be the biggest concern the residents had was the flooding. And we started looking at this nasty clay that you guys have in Moyoc. And it, so it came apparent to us pretty quickly, we, we had to, we had to think about that. So we had these meetings, you know, there were a lot of different things brought up. We went back, we regrouped, and we came up with, with the new plan. The, the property to our east had, we did not work on that. Developer, it was the same developer, but it was a different engineer. They were working on that. That got rezoned to single-family mainland in 2014, I believe, in March of 2014. So we came back and realized, you know, we're going to, to try to get some compatibility with our surroundings, we've taken in the neighbors' concerns, we reduced down to this plan. We went from, you know, 200 units down to 100 units. There were, there were a lot of concerns about how that, how we transition into Quail Run. So we, we went in and we put most of our open space next to Quail Run. We put, where we do have lots of button Quail Run, we put in a 25-foot buffer. We made the lots bigger. Some concerns were raised about how saleable and marketable this site would be, coming in from Food Lion. So we looked at that. We thought about that. And so we, we thought, maybe Puddin Ridge is our selling point. We're going to, we added a connection to Puddin Ridge and made it an amenity. You know, we, thinking about the stormwater, we put our stormwater basins in that area. We're planning that to be our sailing, you know, our main entrance, marketing entrance. And so we, we took in that into consideration. We put in, we're planning on, you know, the connectivity. It was, there were questions raised about the connection to White Pine. And some residents were concerned that traffic from this development would go out through White Pine. By adding the connection to Puddin Ridge and the connection to Carrottoke, it's, it's my opinion that no one's really going to, why would they have a reason to go out through White Pine? If they needed to get to the light at Carrottoke and Puddin Ridge, they would go out through the connection to Puddin Ridge, or they would go out through the shopping center. They had safety, the residents had safety concerns. They had safety, the residents had safety concerns about traffic going through White Pine. We think actually the traffic will come from White Pine and it would probably benefit White Pine to have another connection. There was only one way in and out of White Pine. For emergency vehicle, you know, most design, we have at least two points of access. If, if one is blocked by a car accident, a tree falls across the road, we have another way in and out for emergency vehicles. The residents had concern about safety. I think we're improving that by adding this connection and having another way for an emergency vehicle, school buses to get in and out. The product that the developers proposing, we're proposing house sizes 1,800 to 2,500 square feet. I think Adam has a little representation. We're anticipating the price of the housing being somewhere from the upper 200s to low 300s. The developers talked to several builders, does not have a builder in mind right now, but there is a demand in this area. Moyac is growing and people want to live here. And so there is, there is a demand for the product. Some of the residents had concern that these were going to be rented or they were going to be foreclosed on or, you know, we, we don't see that. We, we see a demand here, we see, you know, you've got a great neighborhood, it's a good community, people want to live here, the developer wants to develop. We, as I mentioned, the, the main issue that seemed to come up is, was the drainage and that was apparent pretty quickly. So we, we deferred last time to put our heads around that a little more and try to get a little more information on that. Several studies have been done. Adam has had, I'm going to turn it over to him here in a second, he did a lot of research on us, we looked into that. We, tonight, it's been raining, I don't know how much rain you guys have had today. Before we came to the meeting, we drove through the neighborhood and took a look. And there were some drainage problems. That neighborhood has some drainage problems. It's, it's obvious. When that neighborhood was done, there were no stormwater controls. The new, the regulations that are out now, the most onerous stormwater regulations that have ever been proposed. And I know it's hard for people to understand, you know, the layperson, but we pretty much have to detain all the water we generate on-site. And we think we can do that with these ponds. We listened to Mr. Deal, I think Adam is, I'm not going to steal his thunder, but we're coming up with that same conclusion, that, you know, we looked at the study that the Hassel and folks did on Section 1. The obvious way to put the water out is to pipe it up to ditch four and with a combination of piping and ditches, get it to the creek. You know, ditch five and ditch six, ditch one have problems. We think that we can improve that some. We don't, until we do a full drainage study, we won't know the extent of that improvement. Our study can probably help determine other improvements that can be made to some of these ditches to help Quail Run, but I don't know if we have the means or the access or the ability to make those improvements, if you understand. So I think, I think what we're proposing, we can, I think we, we won't make the problem worse and I think we will make it better to some degree. Until we do some complete engineering and full analysis, I can't tell you how much right now. But I'm going to let Adam speak a little bit more to drainage and some of the meetings that he had and some of the conversations that he's had.
Yeah, thank you. Adam Werner, as Andrew said, Andy and Andrew have taken most of my thunder that I was planning on speaking tonight, so I'll be brief and keep, keep it, not get involved in numbers, but basically talk about in more detail what Andy Deal was talking about. And that is ditch five is the issue, I think. Ditch five is the problem. Right now, you've got 161 acres of drainage going through there and I walked it, I walked it with the soil and water conservation Pete folks, and there's areas that are bottlenecked, as you mentioned. It's just not a very good drainage way. So what we're proposing, actually, let me step back real quick. Here would be, here's the develop, here's the drainage area that I spoke about, the 161 acres. Very simply, it's basically broken into thirds. 51.3 acres would come from our proposed project, there is 57.5 from Quail Run, and there is 53 from the offsite agricultural site. So basically, a third, a third, a third, okay? What we're proposing to do is have these on-site ponds that would detain everything from our site. So basically, we would drain to these on-site ponds, ponds by a stormwater system, hold that water. Then we would, if you see where the red line is on the picture, we would make improvements to the ditches. And that would include widening, cleaning, there's already drainage easements along there, we would supply drainage easements on our site and basically make it a better drainage way going through there for ditch five. Then the green line, if you see that, we would actually catch the water, the drainage that's coming from the offsite, from the agricultural site, catch that in the green line, combine that with the water coming from our ponds, and then route that down to ditch four. When we looked at ditch four, like Andy said, that was really the best opportunity to take the water. Ditch five is over, way over capacity, ditch four is only at about 25% capacity right now on the, on the north side of Pudding Ridge Road. So we would pipe, we would, in conjunction with Hassel and folks' plan for Phase 1, we would pipe our water withers down ditch four and daylight it underneath Pudding Ridge Road. All right? So what that's going to do is the drainage area then going to ditch five is going to be reduced by 2/3s post-development. So you would have 104 acres that are being diverted away from ditch five. I think, like Andrew said, you know, we'll have to go through these numbers, we're, you know, we'll have to do a drainage study before we can even submit the preliminary plat. That's when we get into our detailed engineering calculations. Like Andy Deal said, we, you know, once those calculations come out, if it doesn't work, if we can't get it to work, then the project doesn't move on anyway. So I think, I think the plan we have right here is, can improve the situation out there. Thank you.
I'll say one more thing. I think, you know, I think our project, we fall within the land use plan, we fall within the small area plan, we were a compatible use for the adjacent neighborhoods. I think we have a good project. Yes, the drainage is a concern, but, you know, right now, we're just asking for zoning. We got to come back before all these, you know, we still got a lot of hoops to go through. And so until, you know, we're, we're prepared to do this drainage study, we're asking you guys grant zoning approval tonight and like Adam says, we got to, we have some things we have to work out and understand, but we still have a long way to go before any shovels get in the dirt. And so you guys and a lot of other people have, you know, an opportunity to, to make sure we're making this better, or making this work. Any questions you guys have of us?
Any questions from the rest of the board?
I have a question, I guess it's from Mr. Woody. Does the UDO require the access on the Pudding Ridge Road or is that just something that's...
No, because, because they have 100 lots, they would be required to develop two points of access, which they, they could do that through Moyac Commons and, and the road through Quail Run. So no, it wouldn't necessarily be required.
So that's, some of the kickback I've heard about it is requiring the access on the Pudding Ridge Road because of the narrowness of the road and, and the traffic that's already being generated there because of Academy. I had to think who it was now. That, that is a concern, even without another subdivision, there's a concern about that traffic. And I know DOT, as part of the TIP plan, was supposed to, I believe, do some improvements on Pudding Ridge and was it to widen it as well and resurface? And I don't know the status of, of...
Yeah, I don't know if it was, I think it was to resurface, but I don't know if it was to widen.
I believe resurfacing.
Okay. And I know there was some concern about some of the culverts that went under Pudding Ridge Road as well, that DOT was supposed to upgrade. Have those been done?
They, they have not and the staff followed up with DOT and, and they were not able to provide a schedule for when that would be done.
And I do believe that staff met with DOT concerning their skin in the game with these issues as well and they made some commitments. Could, could you share those commitments?
During the meeting with NC DOT officials, they, essentially, what you said is that they agreed to review some of the culverts on Pudding Ridge Road as well as on 168 and to look at what types of upgrades or improvements could be made to those culverts or what kind of cleaning could possibly be done to improve drainage. Since that meeting, I'm not aware of any of those actions being done to this point, unless the manager or engineer is. So there's, so I'm, I'm not aware of it since the meeting, but...
And, and I'll...
Not to say it hasn't been done, but we, we followed up probably two weeks ago and at that point, nothing had been done yet, so...
Well, I'll, I'll go back to the, the ditch that runs along the railroad track. That ditch is of that enormous size because it used to take water. And you said there's a hump that they've got to get over, I'm not sure I know what that is. I've been out there with DOT on several occasions and met with some of the citizens and we've walked it and I'm not aware of the hump. All I'm aware of is DOT continues to say that they didn't change the drainage patterns when they did the road, but I do know that there, there has been a change because that ditch does not drain anymore as it used to.
You know, we, we've been in that discussion with them for...
Years.
Years. I mean, I recall that when I first come on this board, we've been discussing that with them with, we've not seen a whole lot of improvement out of DOT.
Because they took some culverts that went under 168 and they, and they closed them. And then they run the water northward, no, run the water, yeah, south, and then made it go under and they changed the natural drainage pattern. And every since that time, we've had these kind of issues.
This, this discussion is identical to the one that was when the Taylor's Do-It went in.
Yes.
And the identical topic came up because when it appeared before the Board of Adjustments, this exact issue was raised again and it was brought out at that time, the DOD had changed the water flow to try to make it go uphill.
That's right.
And as attractive as Tulsa Bay is, it wasn't enough to suck the water out the ditches and out that culvert. So that in fact is accurate. But I, I think you're spot on to, to change to a slightly different topic. I think opening up White Pine will in fact, I don't, I don't see where this subdivision would drain, gosh, okay, different term, would flow into Quail Run, but I think you're going to see a ton of Quail Run, which is also an interesting challenge, coming out through the Moyac Commons Shopping Center. And, and I don't know that, when does DOT get involved? Later, right? To, to analyze that, that whole system because, you know, 100 and something houses potentially draining up that, that's not going to be pleasant either. Because I work there, so I know what that's going to turn into. That's going to be a circus.
Yeah, we would envision some, some of the traffic...
It will make it safer, I agree.
Right.
With the second point of entry, it absolutely will help.
Right.
From a safety standpoint.
I would hope all the cars wouldn't go right, I would think they would split, you know, I guess depending on which way they go, if you had a traffic study done and, you know, distributions and that type of thing. I don't know if they would all go right to the shopping center or if someone would go up Pudding Ridge. I guess it depends on what, what your destination was. But yes, an improvement may need to be done to that road, you're, you're correct.
All right. And any other questions from the board? Do you have any other representatives from the applicant to come before us? If not, I have one further question that maybe you can answer.
I have one also when you're done, or before. Go right ahead. Again, I come back to Mr. Deal who made a statement about there was a road or ditch or a pipe under Pudding Ridge Road that had been improved? Did I miss that?
I could actually speak, I could speak to that. The ditch under Pudding Ridge Road for ditch six was a 48-inch culvert that actually was added in 2010. And it was based on Mr. Deal's recommendations.
Okay, so back in 2010, okay, that's what I'm trying to make sure.
I mean, NC DOT, you met the meeting you had with NC DOT.
Yeah, I was at the meeting with Mr. Woody and, and the Department of Transportation installed that pipe in 2010.
All righty. One question then that I have. In Mr. Woody's presentation, he referred to four conditions that were set forth for staff recommendation as conditional for this action before us tonight. Does in fact the applicant agree to all of the prerequisites or conditions set forth by the staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, that's it for me. Any other questions? If applicant, any other?
I was going to say, Mr.?
Go right ahead.
I remember Mr. Deal had a couple comments or suggestions as well. Don't remember what they were, didn't write them down, but...
It was to fulfill both requirements. The county currently has an either/or on the drainage.
That's right, either/or and his recommendation was an and.
And his recommendation was to adopt both.
Okay. That was, I'm just wondering if that was part of what you were asking as well.
And, and that's a good question. The comment, as I remember it from Mr. Deal, was more general for the entire ordinance, for the, for our stormwater ordinance, as I remember, that it should be changed to either/or, although that would consist of this particular action before us. Mr. Woody, what would be your thoughts?
I think, well, the staff proposed two additional conditions, which the applicant has now agreed to. Mr. Deal proposed a condition that, that perhaps is in conflict with the ordinance. The challenge you have is that you, through conditional zoning, you can't alter ordinance requirements to be less restrictive. So before I can tell you if that would be an appropriate condition, I'd have to analyze that section of the ordinance, which I don't think I can do on the spot right now. So I'm not sure if Mr. Deal's proposal would actually be a valid condition at this point. Because, yeah, because it may be more restrictive, so...
I mean, the indication was...
If you go from either/or to both, that's got to be more restrictive.
It's more restrictive, it's got to be. All right. If, if applicant has concluded, I will open the hearing for the public to come forward. I have some names here. I'm sorry.
One more. Mr. Woody?
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Weatherly and the replacement for the stormwater management, they're saying, based on these four conditions, that they approve this?
It's, it's two conditions, yes. And the technical review committee, which is, consists of planning staff, the county engineer, and a number of other departments are recommending approval provided those two conditions are incorporated, which they have been.
But you don't have recommendation on the one that Mr. Deal made?
I, I don't because I don't, I can try to look at that during the course of your public hearing and see if I can give you a little more clarity on whether or not that could be incorporated into the approval, but I'm going to look before I say it can. And if it is something that can be incorporated, then I think that you and the applicant, again, both have to agree to incorporate that into the approval. But I'll review that while you conduct the public hearing.
All right. With nothing further than I would go forward with the public hearing. And I will call you in order that you have signed up. I would ask when you come forward. We limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address as you come forward. The first person I see is George Winslow.
George Winslow, Carroll, Virginia. The Lindsey Farm is, I guess you consider it south of this property. Came here tonight feeling good, now I'm damn near frustrated, I really am, I'm getting frustrated. I've been up here talking to you folks about the Lindsey ditch, ditch number one. And when I come here and, oh, there's no drainage going into Lindsey ditch, but my farm, that's all the Lindsey ditch is supposed to do, drain my farm, 300 acres draining to the Lindsey ditch, ditch number one. Now I'm hearing, and I've known this, ditch number four drains into the Lindsey ditch, not supposed to. We never gave approval for that. We give approval for that little sewage system, the little lagoon there for the sewage system, the outflow from that sewage system going into ditch number four and going to Lindsey ditch. That was it, not Moyac Commons. Now I'm hearing five and six going to Lindsey ditch. Shouldn't be. Shouldn't be. Back when 168 was wide and I talked to the, the NC DOT engineer there, wanted to know what they're doing, going to do to make the pipe bigger... know what they're doing, going to do to, uh, make the pipe bigger underneath the road there at the Lindsey ditch, ditch number one. Okay, your 20 to 25 years is now. NC DOT said, no, we don't need to do anything with that ditch, it's fine. So what did they do? Went down to survey road, put in a, I guess the pipe is four or five foot in diameter. It's useless because trickles of water go underneath, that's it. So that was very poor engineering. I'm glad you got an engineer up here today telling you what's really happening. And the folks here, they've known it for years what's going on. I've been up here telling you all what's going on and you don't want to listen, I don't know why, but this engineer has put it up here on the screen. Okay, the, the reason the Lindsey ditch cannot be deepened is because of the pipe under 168. All you're gonna do is create a, a hole in pond because it can't flow under 160, okay? You put bigger pipe under 168, you still got a hole in pond because of the railroad. NC DOT's not gonna put any pipes under that railroad. I doubt the railroad's gonna do anything with it either. You got a problem. You really got a problem. Okay, I saw the green area. I think you showed a, a green area going across the farm. The reason there's water, you, you showing a green area across the farm with that water going presumably into ditch four, it's not. Ditch four is backing up, we had to replant beans three times, we gave up. We couldn't, what's the sense of putting more beans in the ground? When they go flood out, that's what happens. They flood out. Does that mean my time's up?
No, sir. No, sir.
So you got a, you got one heck of a drainage problem, you really do. And I haven't heard anything here today to resolve it. Not a thing.
Amen.
I'm through.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Chip Friedman?
Um, we've already, she's already.
Okay. Next will be Paul, is it Garrett? Paul Garrett?
Yes. Paul Garrett, Moyoc, North Carolina. I'm gonna state some of the obvious. We're just asking for single-family mainland, the same zoning as Quail Run. The neighborhood will help the commercial properties next door. It exceeds the UDO requirements and is in compliance with the 2006 land use plan. It is also in compliance with the Moyoc Small Area Plan. Given the fact that this project meets all of the requirements stipulated by planning and zoning, we respectfully ask you for your approval. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Judy Penny?
Hi, I'm Judy Penny and I live in the house that dumps right, right on Pudding Ridge Road that gets flooded all the time. I live in Quail Run. Commissioner Idlet suggested that I could become more informed about flooding and drainage issues by contacting Eric Weatherly, who is the county engineer. I did then meet with Mr. Weatherly at his office. There are six ditches. All of the ditches need work, especially ditches one, five, and six. Ditch three was diverted about 20 years ago when the Moyoc post office was built at the intersection of Carrottoke Highway and Pudding Ridge Road. Ditch three has not flowed or drained efficiently since then and it always floods the property around it. Ditch six is located at the end of Quail Run. Mr. Weatherly said there was a recommendation in 2010, 2011 to increase its capacity and put in bigger culverts, which would have the most impact on the substantial flooding and drainage problems in Quail Run. Ditch number four is not a high-volume ditch. The developer's intent is to increase its efficiency by running pipes under E Street that would run into ditch four. This proposed drainage remedy was calculated only with regard to the already rezoned 25-acre tract behind Food Lion. It was not a comprehensive evaluation that includes the additional increased flooding and drainage of the property today being considered. More preliminary study should be done to include the land attempting to be rezoned here today. Currently, Youngblood Tyler of Mechanicsville, Virginia, is the next in a series of engineering companies in this matter. During the summer of 2014, the Chesapeake Firm of Hassel and Folks was involved. When that firm surveyed my property, I spoke with the surveyor and he candidly told me that this area is at its limit to sustain more drainage and flooding than we already have. Ditch five is the largest ditch in size and volume. I know ditch five very well because it runs the entire length of my property where I have lived for almost 30 years. Mr. Weatherly confirmed what I already know, ditch five is at its capacity. Ditches five and six are the two largest ditches. Mr. Weatherly said that the estimated amounts for their overdue maintenance are $60,000 for ditch five and $90,000 for ditch six. Ditch one is also in need of maintenance at an estimated cost of $20,000. I remember now-retired Mike Doxy stating these estimates to the commissioners at a hearing I attended several years ago. According to the county engineer, there are currently insufficient funds to maintain these ditches, much less increase their capacity. Before any rezoning is considered, there needs to be more preliminary study and a computer model generated. Complaining and blaming the county for not maintaining the ditches so that a builder can get on with constructing a development is exactly backward. I would say that as my county endeavors to appropriate ample tax revenue in an attempt to satisfactorily maintain our ditches, that would be the time to consider any rezoning and future development. The Moyoc Stormwater District Committee has not had its first meeting. Please let those of us who actually live here deal with our status quo problems before we potentially create any new ones. Thank you.
Ann Dale?
I'm Ann Edgedale. My home, Edgewood, is at 209 Pudding Ridge Road, where my family has lived since the 1950s. Our property will be directly affected adversely by the destruction of Rattlesnake Woods, which is on our southern border. I question the foresight of destroying the one little bit of woodland left in Moyoc. Among other things, for now, it is our only buffer to the noise and the traffic on 168 and the early morning dumpster dump at the Food Lion. Another major concern is the proposal of entrance to this project from Pudding Ridge Road, which has already been discussed. This will exacerbate an already dangerous situation of traffic congestion in a closely confined and relatively already heavily populated area. Pudding Ridge Road is a challenge for good drivers. It is a serious danger zone for our children, especially getting on and off school buses, for our pedestrians, and for our elder drivers who cannot live comfortably and safely on Pudding Ridge Road. Honorable leaders, Moyoc has been the victim of misdirected development for decades, much of which has been dumped on you to correct. This project is yet another example. Who among the taxpayers and voters in this room will benefit from this project? Tell us how we are to benefit from this project. Once again, we are considering ceding control of our community to outsiders who have expressed no willingness to listen to the concerns of neighboring property owners, outsiders who exploit our hodgepodge development, making their bucks by offering cheap housing in exchange for our good schools, emergency services, and thus far, our relatively rural atmosphere. And once the bucks are in their pockets, they're gone. They are selling out and moving on to the next easy target. How do you intend to police this project? Once you have handed over control to these out-of-state developers, can you not take a step back and make a more careful decision before forfeiting control of our living environment? Completely discounting responsibility for the safety and well-being of those who elected you? Please. These people assembled here have elected you to make decisions on our behalf. Don't cede your control to those with little interest in the desires and healthy living of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dale. Wendy Shannon?
Good evening, Commissioners. I did have one question before my time starts. Did you not extend it to a five-minute speaking period when you change the time of the meetings?
I believe that was for public comment at the end of the meeting. Public, uh, we have a public hearing.
Okay, well, I, I hope I will.
That's, that's different.
Well, I'm gonna speak fast then, so.
That's fine. You, you, take, take your time. Take your time.
I appreciate that. Uh, good to see you all again. I'm Wendy Shannon, live at 204 Pudding Ridge Road, coincidentally directly across from the easement that's shown on the map and, uh, of course, is obviously one of my concerns as well. Uh, I spoke before the planning board when this was considered and, and watched the planning board staff, um, I'm sorry, the planning board members exhibit the same concerns that many of us have already spoken about and that I share. This flooding and the stormwater issue has been very well covered tonight and I'm, I'm very appreciative that you had Mr., um, Mr. Dill here because he did see exactly what happened in the flooding of 2011. Uh, the issue is that it's not just a big storm event like that, it is everyday rains and things that continue to be a problem. And again, that has been discussed, but I did want to, uh, I only have one printout, but I have some photos that I'm, which I'll pack around if you'd like to see some of the flooding. The large printout, the large paper printout is, uh, from last summer of 2014 in June. Uh, my son was taking pictures while I was driving around and from Pudding Ridge all the way down to the intersection across Food Lion and all the way past to Miss, uh, the Lindsey Farm area is flooded, uh, in all directions. The commercial properties even are flooded. It's not just the residential properties that are affected, it is that entire area that I call the heart of Moyoc. Quail Run, obviously, many of those pictures, and I think I left out the infamous carp in the ditch, which everyone I think has seen. Fish don't belong in ditches in a residential area, they belong in creeks. This is just evidence of what Mr. Idlet has said about how pervasive and intrusive this problem is from the creek back up into the neighborhood. Based on what was said by the representative of, of formerly Quible, this is a very broad, widespread, comprehensive problem. It does not have a single simple solution. But as I look at the descriptions of what might be done to resolve this, I can't help but think that we're continuing to want to redirect water that wants to go where it wants to go. And it does not turn corners. When it hits the end of a ditch, it's not gonna make a right turn or a left turn. When it wants to, it's gonna go right ahead of, in the direction it's heading. I witnessed the 2011 event where the water was rushing across Pudding Ridge and I know there are other places where it does the same thing. People can't get in and out of their properties and you're going to add an access from a property that is currently undeveloped and predominantly wooded into a neighborhood where it has the probably single biggest depth of flooding that I've seen, to the point where people wearing shorts are almost getting their shorts wet. That's how bad White Pine is when it floods. And being a newly appointed member of the Moyoc Stormwater District Board, I would really like the opportunity to try and address this because we have got a problem that doesn't have a simple solution and putting more houses in a place that right now is the single, only undeveloped large parcel, other than across the highway. It, it's all there is that we have. And pulling out the buffer, the trees that absorb water from drainage, you're gonna take all of that out and replace it with ponds. And those ponds are gonna overflow, the water is not gonna go where you want it to go. And that's all there is to it. The safety on Pudding Ridge has been addressed recently as well by Ms. Dale. I'm afraid to walk down Pudding Ridge Road. So you put that much more traffic on Pudding Ridge, it's gonna be that much more dangerous and it's coming out right across the end of my driveway. That does not make me a happy camper. I don't believe that access is necessary and of course, that would require the developer to completely rearrange their project. One final note that I did want to bring up is that the developer's representative stated that this is a desirable place to be and to move. And I believe that is because it is the way it is now, not the way it's going to become if we continue to allow these sorts of developments. I do want to thank you all for the questions that you asked because you asked many of the things that I wanted to know. And I certainly hope that you will take the time to consider and deny this rezoning request until this situation can be much better addressed in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. That concludes the list that I have of people who have signed up to speak on this matter. Is there anyone else here that has not, yes, yes? Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I also have a answer on the condition that was discussed earlier.
Okay.
I can provide that now or after the testimony.
All righty. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Chip Friedman, I live at 500 Pacific Avenue, Virginia Beach, Virginia. Mr. Winslow spoke of the Lindsey ditch, okay? His property is right here. He refers to this ditch, which is ditch number one, okay? All of his 300 acres are not in the drainage district. They drain, all of his property drains into this ditch. And, um, I, I was at the meeting with Mr. Woody and, um, Adam and Mr. Weatherly. And North Carolina Department of Transportation, they, they did say that they would come behind the railroad tracks and clean what Mr. O'Neill was talking about before. They also said that they were gonna sister the pipe for, for ditch number one. They have a budget, uh, Mr. Chairman, to pave from the railroad tracks in Moyoc to the Food Lion, it's gonna start in the next six months. And they're gonna include a, a, a sister pipe to make it twice as big, to Mr. O'Neill's point, uh, for ditch number one. Now, that's all separate from what we're talking about, trying to make ours. And, um, a, a, as far as Mr. Dill's suggestion of and/or the ordinance, um, we're, we're already following the most stringent requirements of the two-year and 10-year, but we actually believe that we can meet Mr. Dill's and/or potential condition. So regardless of Mr. Woody's research, we would agree to that condition as far as the, the future drainage studies. We, we've spent a lot of money already on the drainage. Obviously, we don't have a completed study, which we were hoping to have for today, but, um, A-Adam has been in the field. I've spoken to Mike Doxy myself and, um, we do believe that we can be part of the solution and not part of the problem. And, um, a-also, as far as Mr. Winslow's property, um, we have 10, 12 acres of, of open space. Could you put your plan back up and show us the big open space?
I'm sorry. Mr. Friedman, could you speak into the microphone because I'm not so sure that everybody can hear you? And it might be beneficial, well, you're gonna use this map up here. If you go back to that map, it might be beneficial to kinda turn it sideways so that the audience can see it as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, um, this, this large open space, um, that we, we show here, adjacent to, to Quail Run, i- if for some reason the county did not want it as a park, they could use it for additional stormwater management, put more ponds in there to help Quail Run, which I, I don't believe they have many ponds at all for the whole neighborhood. We would be willing to dedicate that land to the Stormwater District. Our property, along with lots of other properties, pay into the Stormwater District Tax Fund. And, um, the, this, this property here that I was pointing to, that, that property, i- i- in the 560-acre property behind it, the Walcott Farm, it all drains into ditch number one. None of those properties are in the drainage district. I, I know there's been suggestions by people on your staff to make the districts bigger to help the area. I, I would hope Mr. Winslow and the other property owners that are not in the district that are saying that there's problems, w- would join in with the taxpayers, which I'm one of them. And I, I'm available for any questions and, um, w- we wanna be part of the solution, not part of the problem. We wanna follow the rules. I'm here to work with you and, um, I'm available for a question.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Chip, the, 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 the open space you're talking about, that's the green, that's, that's outlined in green? Yes, sir. With the one retention pond that's already there? Yes, sir.
12 acres.
12 acres of land, Mr. Idlet?
Woods, wooded land, it won't be disturbed.
Correct. But I, I, but if the county needs to put some additional stormwater ponds in there beyond. beyond what we're showing, e- i- it would be up to, uh, Mr. Scanlon and the county and, and the district, if they wanna use the land, i- 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 if it'll be part of the solution, we're, we're willing to offer it.
Is, is, is that property today, is it, is, is that high ground? Is that wetlands? Or, I mean, what, what's the makeup of that pr- I'm not familiar, what's the makeup of that?
We, we have a letter that says, uh, m- most of it is highlands. There, there's some teeny little pockets. Uh, one shows one-tenth of one acre in one area, but, um, just to go back to, um, when Andrew and Adam were giving their presentation, we actually showed, um, 30 houses in that area. So w- we wouldn't have put them in there if we didn't believe it was high ground, and, and, and we wouldn't be offering it if it wasn't good.
Thank you, sir. All right, real quick, so most of that is wooded right now?
All of it's wooded. Th- th- that green area where, uh, we were proposing the 12-acre park.
Okay. Rattlesnake Woods?
Yes, but Rattlesnake Woods has three sections. One of them's been approved for 55 lots. That's the first section. It was-
The remainder of the Rattlesnake Woods?
Correct. And it to- and, and, and you're looking at about 20 acres. Could be 24.
And that's, is, is that what we're looking at there?
Yeah, also, Mr. Idlet, um, Rattlesnake Woods was cut over 10 years ago.
Right.
I- it's, to my knowledge, it's, it's not a forested area. I- i- according to your Unified Development Ordinance, if it was, we would be required to do tree counts and all kinds of things, and the staff has determined that the trees are not that large, and, um, so it didn't, it didn't fall under that requirement.
So this area has been logged previously and now is doing a regrowth?
That's correct. It was cut over. It, you, and, and it actually was, was, um, according to Martin Jarvis, um, uh, of blessed memory, i- i- it was, the whole piece of property when his father, uh, and his, and his grandfather had it was, was farmed. And then they planted some fo- uh, so, some trees on it, and they used it and cut the trees down, and they sold the trees, and, um, and, uh, but that was many years ago, long before me.
So-
The north end has not been cut out.
Also, the, the, the portion that is closest to Pudding Ridge, is that considered Rattlesnake Woods as well?
Yes. I'll defer to his knowledge.
Yes. It has not been cut out.
Mr. Friedman, while you're up there, um, you had mentioned the improvements and initiatives as far as the first piece of property that was zoned. What kind of improvements or initiatives have you started working on with the first property that was, um, rezoned?
Sure. Um, we have submitted, um, some, uh, preliminary plat documents, the engineers have, uh, and, and they've included, uh, Mr. Woody, did, did you receive a complete set for the preliminary plat? And, and then we move on to the construction plans, and in those, in the, in that preliminary plat documents was the completed study for the drainage for the first section that Mr. Deal reviewed with Mr. Weatherly, and, um, they, uh, worked with our other engineer on the other parcel, and they, and they approved that aspect of it.
And what kind of improvements or suggestions, um, because first and foremost, the safety is, is my biggest, um, concern, and we've had this conversation, and I've had that conversation with your engineers, um, as far as the first zoning coming through on private, property, and I, I see, you know, one of the, um, property owners of Moyoc Crossing here, um, or managers, um, Mr. Rose, sorry. Um, what kind of surveys have you done with the stormwater for that, um, and also the traffic? Um, because my big concern is buses, trucks, you know, another 50 cars or another 150 cars plus coming through the shopping center, and-
Okay, I'd like to respond.
And that is one of my greatest concerns.
Okay. Um, well, as far as the, the traffic is concerned, um, the first, you told me on the first 27 acres, is that how? Um, we, we're exiting there at the Burger King, and we also can go down and exit at Commercial Place, um, by the, a Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I, and my memory serves right, you've been an advocate to try and get some stoplights for different areas, like the neighborhood that you live in, Tolles Creek Road and other places, and w- we have a stoplight, and, and, and I think you, you can see that we're fortunate to have it, and we have a left turn and a right turn, and, and actually, o- over here down Currituck Commercial Drive, going out to Currituck Highway to the south, those are state-maintained roads that we have access through. So I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Well, eh, eh, how about improvements through the shopping center? I'm, I'm in that shopping center three or four times a week.
Well, we haven't started our construction.
And, and, well, and, and, I mean, that needs to be part of the planning for me to, to consider this, is, is, you know, adding two additional pieces of property going through that shopping center, like I said, with the buses, the trucks, the cars. Um, what kinda, I mean, have you had any conversations with the shopping center, um, management as far as improvements? Um, because the traffic flow right there at the Burger King and the Food Line and, and, you know, it, it's, and the sushi restaurant, I mean, it's, it's congested now.
I- i- it was part of our conditional rezoning in the first application to make that connection. So with these other two parcels, uh, Ms. Gilbert, i- if we didn't use the Moyoc Commons Drive that you're mentioning, then we would have to use the platted 60-foot right-ofways going out to Pudding Ridge Road, and we would have to use the White Pine.
If, memory serves me, if they're state-maintained roads, isn't it just DOT that can improve that road?
That's correct.
I, I mean, we can want all we want, but if it's a state-maintained road, he's not gonna be responsible, or the development's not gonna be responsible for doing any upgrades on that.
Oh, I, I'd like to address that when you get a chance.
Sure.
Um, the Moyoc Commercial Drive is a privately owned, publicly dedicated right-ofway, okay? So, um, in, in my understanding, Mr. McCree can give you fir- further information on right-ofways, but it's open to the public. It's platted, open to the public. Uh, Mr. Woody and his staff put in our previous approval that we would improve that road with the first phase. So it, I, I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, earlier you said it was state-maintained.
No, no, it's a separate road. Currituck Commercial Drive is, is, is adjacent to, to Moyoc Commercial Drive.
Okay, I'm really familiar with that road. But, okay, if that's state-maintained, that's scary, you know, all in and of itself.
What part of it's scary?
'Cause I drive that road daily. That's-
Currituck Commercial Drive?
Uh.
Well, the DOT is gonna review our plans, so, I mean, they're part of the review process and approval process, and they deem the roads an added, but they're gonna make us fix them.
Okay. How are you, how are you talking about improving this road?
Um, Moyoc Commercial Drive, the binder only stops at the sewer plant even though the road is platted all the way to our property. So in, in our previous application, we agreed to pave and improve the binder, the asphalt all the way to the property.
But it doesn't change what's already there from Food Line to the stoplight? Is that correct?
Yeah, tha- that part's already paved. Yes, correct.
Right, and that has a left turn lane and a right turn lane and an in-
And a stoplight.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay. But, but if you would prefer, w- w- we can, we can go out the other accesses with this property, Mr. Beaumont, I mean, eh, eh, we have-
It, it's, it, I just wanted to make the clarification that we can want all we want, but if DOT owns that intersection, DOT owns the intersection, and, eh, you know, the same challenges that Commissioner Gilbert has trying to get out of ranch land, we at least have a light, you're correct. But if that's light deemed to be, eh, you know, DOT controls all of that, and so I would not expect any improvement by DOT at that light, because if they're not gonna put one in ranch land, they're sure not gonna make that one any better. So I think what we have, eh, eh, when you say improvements, we're thinking, okay, we're gonna increase capacity going through that traffic light. When you say improvement, what, what you mean is where there's dirt, there's now gonna be asphalt, and it's gonna go back to your property, so-
Yeah, I, I'd like to answer that for you.
Sure.
Okay. Um, this, this 78 acres, it was always designed to go out Pudding Ridge Road. This access that goes along, um, from the property all the way to Pudding Ridge Road is a 60-foot right-ofway. So I'm not sure if that answers part of your question. Also, it goes to Pudding Ridge Road, and then Pudding Ridge Road has another stoplight.
Understood. So, but see, what happens is, when you make a statement, and, and I'm not implying you're trying to, whatever, but when, when you make a statement that Moyoc Commons is going to be improved, right? What we wanna hear is that somehow we're gonna be able to pump more cars through that intersection without it adversely impacting anything else. And what I was trying to bring to the, you know, to the residents is that nothing's gonna happen with that light, that when you say you're gonna improve that, eh, eh, it's not gonna improve the light's ability to change-
The entrance, that's correct.
You're, you're saying there'll be asphalt that goes back to your subdivision, which is clear, absolutely understood, but, you know, this board makes decisions that other boards get to inherit and try to fix. But what I don't want is a false sense of expectation, because it'll come down on, on, well, it'll come down on us first and foremost, but then eventually your name will probably get thrown around, that by golly, he said he was gonna improve that traffic light, and has anything changed with the traffic light? And the answer is-
I don't own the traffic light.
You're not gonna-
I don't, I don't own the traffic light.
Absolutely. That's-
Our engineers, Adam, met with NC DOT, and we asked about a traffic study, and they did not require one at this time.
Correct.
But once we get further along, they may require a traffic study, which may implicate some-
Understood.
-adjustments to the signal, widen another road and that type of thing. So we haven't got that far.
I understand that, but when we say that we're gonna improve that road and that light-
Yeah.
That's a faul- you're, we gotta assume we're gonna have what we got, and it's not gonna get any better. And if it does, then we're all happy. But if, if, if we hear that light's gonna get improved, that's the expectation. That's all I wanted to establish.
Okay, and i- if I could, because we're, and, and those are good points, but we're getting dangerously close to getting into, during the meeting, negotiating, negotiating this matter instead of hearing it and acting upon what's before us. So if I could, there's, there was one other person? And if you would, please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Payne. I live at 103 Brookdale Court. Um, point of reference, I live on infamous ditch five, and the two carp, and that's not a fishtail, were caught across the street from my house. We've all spoken about the concerns with the flooding, but my biggest concern is Currituck. If you put that many people with that limited of, of an access, they're not gonna have nice things to say. I was shocked. I'm a relatively new, um, property owner, nine years. Everybody else has been out there 20 and 30, to see my road flood. My property becomes an island when we have any kind of storm. It's really kinda frightening to see the road go to where my husband's out measuring to see if we can take the big truck down the road so we can get to work. It's bad. Well, I can just imagine if people come in and they can't get out, because I can't get out on Saturday and Sunday from May till September because of the traffic of the tourists up there. I can't get out of Food Line if I go there. And people are gonna be living in the neighborhood and try to get out, and they're gonna be upset because they're not gonna be able to. And going around the other way is not gonna help because it's the same bottleneck. And then you're gonna have the issue of when their property floods, and it will, that they're not gonna be very happy, so they're not gonna say good things about Currituck, and that breaks my heart. My heritage is here. I haven't lived here a long time myself, but my heritage is here. My mother was a New Bern, my grandmother a Gallup, my great-grandmother an O'Neill. So I've been around here, that, if not a resident, but around here for a long time, and it's always had a good reputation, and it needs to keep it. The last thing is, when you put more concrete down, you're gonna have more runoff. When you have more runoff, you're gonna have more flooding, and it seems pretty simple. And so that's where my great concern is, and thank you for your time. And, and these gentlemen did listen in our citizens' meeting, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Well, if, if, I, I would ask if it's gonna be something that's different from what already has been stated and brought before us, that's fine.
Absolutely, it will be.
Thank you. Yeah, and name and address.
David Palmer, 3861 Currituck Highway. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations. Good evening, staff and commissioners. Um, I haven't been up here in a long time, but this is something that's sort of near and dear to my heart also. I had the great privilege of working on the land use plan, and Mr. Scanlon may correct me, I believe we started it in 2003, ended about 2005. It was finally adopted in 2006, I believe that's the timeframe. We had many, many meetings throughout the county. And subsequent to the plan, you've also had the Moyoc Small Area Plan. This project is compliant with both of those. The project is being brought forward in excess of both of those. You, as a group, as a body, have the terrible task of balancing law, what's right, what's fair, and the emotions of residents. The emotions are very important. These people live here, they live it. But the plans were in place, the soils were, they were considered, the first land use plan in '05, '06, was the Camel Land Use Plan. Had a lot of strict guidelines as to how we considered things, what we looked at. And it had to do with the impact of water and soil in Currituck County. So none of this has changed. This developer's coming forward, meeting everything that he's supposed to, offering more, and actually, according to the engineers that y'all have hired and his engineers, gonna be bringing in improvement to a bad situation that was established many years ago, before we had all the restrictions and all the governance on development. So at this point, it's up to you. You've got to look, you have to take control of Currituck County, make sure that we develop in a good fashion. We have the plans in place, and unless you're just gonna throw them out, you need to pay attention to the plans, they were there, and pay attention to the residents. They are important. But be fair and equitable to all. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. All right, I'd like to, uh, close the public hearing and-
I'm just kidding, I'm sorry. You had asked, someone had asked a question about the height, the land, whether it was wetlands. I have your own documents, I'd be glad to give it to you, since, you know, it's hard to access.
All right.
This is actually your Camel Land Use Plan update. I've got a couple printouts, but, um, I don't, what do you want me to do with it?
You can give it to Mr. Woody if you would.
This actually shows, it's, it's actually very easy to see based on the layout of this property. That one shows that it is the least suitable land, the, the better part of the property that's being developed. You can see it right up in there. See that blue? That's least suitable. On this one, it's orange, and orange is class three. Both of those things, um, indicate that that is not a good place to develop, and that's, that's your Camel Land Use Plan map.
All right, thank you.
So it's, it is wetlands, it's forested wetlands.
I have one, one more question I would like to ask of the attorney. Mr. McCree, the gentleman, Mr. Winslow, I think, they come up and was talking about ditch number one, that I think you said you, you owned ditch number one, is that, or the property? And other, other ditches were draining into that, that didn't have the authority or, or permission to drain into that. Uh, I mean, I know that's a civil issue, I would suspect, but I, I'm just, I, I've got that on my mind a little bit, I'm just wondering what your comments would be to that.
It, it would be, I mean, I, I don't know what property rights-
Yeah.
-Mr. Winslow has versus those that may have improperly connected to the, to that ditch, or, I, I, I just don't know without any further information. But, but that would be a civil matter.
Yeah.
All right, and then this, this, this is, this'll be it.
Okay, George Winslow, the, uh, that farm was surveyed back, uh, two centuries ago, and that was the last time it was surveyed. At that time, it showed the Lindsey Farm being, uh, the, the, the boundaries of the Lindsey Farm being on the outboard side of all the ditches. Now, I presume these new developers have come along and done their survey, and they, they found out where the property lines are. I haven't, I haven't gotten the farm surveyed, but- I haven't gotten the farm surveyed, but at that time, it showed that the Lindsey Farm was outboard, not inboard, outboard of all the ditches. Now, is that what you found when you did your survey? I don't know.
The properties, the three properties of seventy some acres, their, their legal description, which is from an old legal description, goes to the center of the ditch.
Center of the ditch.
Center of the Lindsey.
I don't know whether other properties do or not, I didn't look into that, but those three properties, the description says center of the ditch.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing now, and, but I would like to make one comment. I think what's abundantly clear to us tonight, that we have before us an applicant with a specific application before us, but the testimony that has, or the comments that have been made tonight, just further accentuate what this board knows, certainly, certainly the three years I've been on it, is Moayoc has serious water, stormwater problems and/or wind problems that back up the water. We know that. Ms. Penny spoke to a workshop that was held, I think it might have been a year or so ago, wherein we were given several estimates at varying degrees of work that was involved that would address, mitigate, or would mitigate the, the problems. Subsequent to that, there were hearings, public, or, or public meetings up in the Moayoc area, that we went out to the public to see what Moayoc, what, what their pleasure was. I've not heard since that, I mean, it's, for lack of dying, saying it died on the vine, I've not heard any completion of what the county, what the direction should be, because we know, all right, we hear you, we know you've got a problem. Part of this is we have to determine to what extent the Moayoc wants to address this. Mr. Scanlon, where, and again, I, I, we have talked about this, but what, what, what would you suggest that we do going forward to address these issues? They're not going to go away, the issues are not going to go away. And what do we need to do to get this jump started again, or to resume the dialogue and discussion?
Well, as you mentioned, about a year ago, staff was asked to go up into the Moayoc community, which we had a series of public meetings. We took the engineering staff, we took the soil conservation staff, we reviewed the issues, very similar to what you've heard tonight regarding these ditches. We presented options of a bare maintenance all the way to trying to create additional capacity in the system. There was conversation about the, the cost certainly is excessive, and it would generate the need to increase the size of the district. We had surveys, we had public meetings, that information was compiled and brought back to the Board of Commissioners, and we are waiting for the direction from the board of where you would like to go. There was some concern from some commissioners that perhaps we did not, or were not able to capture a large enough of the population of Moayoc to support moving forward with a conversation that required something as, such as, as a taxing district. So, that information was compiled, delivered, and we are waiting for the direction from the Board of Commissioners on how you'd like to proceed.
Would it be advisable to schedule a workshop to visit this and...
It, it would. In fact, this board, as you've heard tonight, recently put together the Stormwater District, so you have a citizen advisor group that is, as one member expressed tonight, is prepared and anxious and willing and ready to engage however this board would like to see them engage. And so, you, you, you've, if, if the best course of action is to bring it back to you at a, a work session and just kind of go back and review the data that was collected to date, we certainly can do that.
Very good. I apologize to the applicant because this has become more than just a discussion about what's before us, but it is relevant. I mean, it, it's relevant, it's, your application is a part of this overall concern. We had the people here, and I thought it was a good opportunity to, at least, I know we digressed, and I apologize to the applicant for that. The public hearing is closed. I will ask the board for a motion.
Chairman Ford, good. Mr. Woody, I know the applicant said that he would take and agree to those terms, is that allowable, or what did you find?
I do, I have two corrections to statements that staff made tonight. One is, I found some information, DOT, since our meeting, they did go out and clean a few culverts, so DOT did do some cleaning, they have not done any replacements to any of the infrastructure out there. So, following the meeting, they did some cleaning but no upgrades. The other thing is, as I misspoke, I said that conditions of zoning approval can't be more restrictive than the ordinance. That wasn't correct. What I meant to say is conditions of zoning approvals can't vary or modify ordinance requirements. So, with that in mind, I think that what Mr. Dill proposed would be allowable, it's essentially taking one standard and then including another, which is a deviation, but another standard and making the, the outcome meet both those. For the record, I would read what the condition would, would read as should the board and applicant agree. Development must implement stormwater standards to reduce the peak discharge from the 24-hour, 10-year storm event down to the two-year event from the pre-development conditions of a wooded site, that's the retention requirement, and perform a downstream drainage capacity analysis to demonstrate the downstream drainage capacity exceeds the pre-development discharge rate from the 24-hour, two-year storm event from the pre-development conditions of a wooded site. That's the requirement that allows developers to look at the downstream capacity as an alternative. So, what Mr. Dill proposed is having them do both those as part of the stormwater analysis, and I think that could be added as a condition, provided the board and the applicant agree to it.
And if they didn't take, and if these things weren't met, then all construction would halt or not begin?
If they couldn't meet the condition, they cannot move forward with the project.
And that's also what the two conditions that the board set?
In addition to the two that have already been added to the request.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question for Mr. Woody. Looking at that, that map that was presented, about the least desirable areas with the wooded wetland areas, did, did staff look at that or take that into consideration when they made the recommendations?
We did. That map that, that was presented was the land suitability analysis, which was actually used as the basis for developing the future land use map. So, the fact that that area is designated full service is probably based on the fact that the majority of that parcel was considered suitable, suitable for development. Now, there are portions of the parcel that show poorer soils, if they move, if this were approved and they moved forward to the preliminary plat approval, at that time, they would actually do soil testing and wetland delineations to actually determine what, if any, soil is not actually suitable for development. So, remember, those maps, the land suitability analysis is done at 30,000 feet, so to speak. But again, that map is the basis for where full ser, among other things, but one of the bases is for where full service is designated.
Okay. No further questions? I would ask the board, I'd entertain a motion relative to PB 15-16, Moayoc Commons Phase
Mr. Chairman, as bad as it makes me say this, and as much information that I've heard from citizens, I've walked the property, I've listened, I've seen the requirements that are met, I believe not to give the chance for, as Ms. Penny said, the Stormwater Committee to meet, to look at the other studies that haven't been complete, I would almost have to say we should table this until we can have those opportunities, because right now, I don't believe we have all the information to go forth or backwards. So, that would be my motion to table it.
I have a motion before the board to table this matter for a continuing study. Do I have a second?
If tabling it, is there a timeframe that you were considering?
Mr. Woody, to get these other studies done that they've talked about, or possibly, how long do you think that might take, for Mr. Scanlon, in reference to both the Stormwater Group meeting and the, one part that they talked about, the study had not been complete when it came to drainage?
We can schedule the work session as soon as your next commissioner's meeting, but what action do you want them to undertake, and what time period that can be accomplished? I think that time schedule is significantly longer.
So, we're talking possibly 90 days or more?
A year. To, for clarity, to accomplish what?
To let the Stormwater Group meet, to finish the study that was not complete, I believe, that they were talking about when it came to the drainage, as to the post-development drainage map. Would, you know, would ample time allow us to take and finish, and give us that information?
I'm not knowing the degree of work that would need to be done to finish that study, I'm not sure if I can tell you tonight with some level of accuracy how long that will take.
I would say at least, you know, possibly 60 days to give the staff a chance to talk with both the developer and for a chance for the Stormwater Committee at least to meet and give us some feedback. I would say at least 60 days if the developer thought he could have those other studies done, or is that something that would not be?
And you're not, are you referring to the, the study that's being proposed here tonight? The additional study that needs to be done to look at drainage?
Well, yes.
The, the, the study that you're talking about, being able to incorporate the, the and versus or, that, that study, you'd like to have that undertaken?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I would just comment, man, maybe inappropriately, because we have a motion before us, but I think short of a major stormwater plan or study, we're just kicking the can down the road. We, we have the same issues, and we're going to have the same problems come before us. So, I don't know if in, the, the, the plan Commissioner Hall is calling for would be encompassing enough to address the issues that we have.
Well, if, if he's referring to the study that we've been talking about here, where Mr. Dill suggested we look at both parts of the equation versus one, that has been proposed as a condition of approval, and if you would like for that to be considered in advance of making a decision, I believe you'd need to ask the applicant if he's prepared to move forward to undertake that study before he gets a ruling by this board.
Yes.
All right, he's saying yes. Do you have a timeframe it might take you?
90 days or so.
And that would also give ample time for the Stormwater Committee to meet, and possibly give some answers. A work session for us, I think that 90 days would give us a chance for all three things, and I do not look easily on looking to continue this, but I don't think that we've gotten everything we need to say yes or no, because I think both sides, both sides have a valid point, and flooding is our biggest issue. Listening to people as I walked the property, or I met with people, that was the number one issue, was the flooding. There's nothing worse than if you can't use your property because it's underwater. So, I would say my motion is 90 days.
We have a motion and a second before us. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, any further discussion? I'm sorry, any further discussion?
I would only say that we put this on our first, our agenda item for the first meeting in March.
Paul.
Is that 90 days, first meeting in March?
I, I just...
January and February, that's two months, that's not 90 days.
Oh, you got all of December.
And I would have one other comment. This issue, call me a pessimist, is not going to get figured out in 90 days.
Absolutely.
And...
Absolutely.
At, at the risk of, you know, passing this along and requiring everybody to come back out and start this process over again, this issue's been with us ever since 168 got, got upgraded, and it's not going to go away until DOT comes to the table and fixes what the, the problem that they caused. So, I appreciate, you know, us thinking about this for another 90 days, but I, I have my doubts that anything significant would be decided or figured out that's different than we already know today.
And, and I would add to that, I don't know how fair it is to the applicant to incur, impose additional costs on him to come back, and quite frankly, I mean, I've, I've sat on this board for three years, I have heard these issues over and over again, and I echo Commissioner Beaumont's, this is not, there's not a solution that's going to come up in 90 days. I, I just, I do not believe it. And, not a, not a solution that's going to address the, the issues in totality. And, but we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
No.
The motion does not pass.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I would move to deny PB 15-16, Moayoc Commons Phase Two, conditional rezoning of 50.65 acres from ag to conditional single-family mainland, C-TAC SFM, because it is inconsistent with the following policies in county adopted plans. 2006 Land Use Plan Agricultural Policy Number Four states, county growth management tools, including particular zoning, should provide protection to agriculture and other resource-based activities from incompatible land uses such as residential subdivision in the midst of generally uninterrupted farmland. The Moayoc Small Area Plan Community Character Policy Number One wants to encourage and foster development that is compatible with rural atmosphere transitional area and a small-town Main Street feel, consistent with divisions, policies, and future land use map of this plan. The rezoning is not reasonable and not in the public interest because it will detract from the rural atmosphere of the Moayoc area by converting 50.65 acres of existing farmland and woodland to residential development of single-family homes. It will create adverse impacts to the existing community by putting stress on the existing infrastructure such as roads and drainage systems. And finally, it will not protect the agriculture and other resource-based activities in the Moayoc area by promoting the development of a residential subdivision of single-family homes in the midst of generally uninterrupted farmland.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion before us and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
All opposed?
No.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Where do we go with the drainage? That's the, the, the big elephant in the room, and we have been discussing drainage forever. Mr. Winslow has been here, I almost feel like we're family, he comes here every time we talk about...
I'm 70 years old, I've been here that long.
Yeah. Every time he comes, I know he's, he's coming to speak on, on drainage. DOT has got to be involved with the issues as it relates to 168. I don't know how we get them involved. I have tried, others have tried, they come, they look, they even did a flow study the last time they came.
Can you speak in my...
Works better when I cut it on. They even, they even did a flow study, and, and they say that there is no problem with the drainage in those ditches, and you can talk to anybody, Mr. Flore is probably going to address this, but you can talk to anybody that's lived in the Moayoc area for, before the road was widened, and they will tell you that the water flowed freely and deeply in that ditch across the street that now is dry all the time. And unless DOT is engaged in this and we get some resolution to this, whether this gets approved or doesn't get approved, the folks in Quail Run, the commercial areas or whatever, still facing the same issues over and over and over, and I, I hope that our new chairman can take the lead on some resolution and pull in everybody together on this because it's vitally important.
And, and Commissioner, that is, that's the problem, and until that problem is resolved, in, in my opinion, not... And until that problem is resolved, in my opinion, not disparaging this subdivision, but we have an incumbent responsibility as the governing body of this county. We are aware of a problem, we know it exists, and to just add more traffic, more cars, more potential victims to this problem due to, you know, safety, accidents, water, flooding, et cetera, et cetera, that would be foolish for this body to undertake.
Otherwise, we are just kicking it down the road, the can.
Mr. Chairman, it's real simple. I mean, I certainly could and did vote to table it for a period of time, to do just some of the things that we're talking about. Peace mailing, the drainage issues there is not going to fix a thing. All we're doing is exacerbating the problem even more. I mean, we sat down and as Mr. O'Neill said, we've had this conversation on numerous occasions. We sit in there, Mike Doxy presented us Plan A, B, and C. And it's just, it's going to take sitting down and saying, bite the bullet, and Plan A is what you're going to have to do to fix the problem, and that's widen ditches, make it more accessible where more water can move, and until you do that, you're just going to have the same issues. It's sad that Mr. Friedman and other folks get caught up in this, it's not their fault, but it's just an inherent problem with the drainage there. I mean, you and I grew up here, rode by those fields and seen water that deep standing in them, and not just because houses are there now, back when there wasn't no houses, it flooded.
And I'm sorry, I have an issue with, well, just grab more landowners and make them pay taxes to help fix this as well. That is, I have an incumbent resistance to that being the solution either.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that...
No, 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 I know, but that's been when, you know, we had that brief, that was voiced that we need to broaden the base.
However we have to do it, if we're going to fix the problem, we've got to quit admiring it and come to a conclusion and fix it.
Well, I'll make one comment on that. The Moyoc Stormwater District, that Citizens Advisory Board that's been appointed are very assertive, and I don't want to say aggressive, but they are very assertive, and I think that they will make some things move forward and help assist with that.
If I could make one last one. And we had a chance to have somebody else who keeps saying we don't have the money to do things, to give us a study that said, this is what we may need to do. They were going to incur the cost. Now we are moving forward, so that's all I have to say.
All righty. Mr. Flor, would you like to make a comment? And let me say that you have been to, if memory serves me correctly, every meeting for three years, and I don't believe, I don't, well, for the three years I've been a commissioner, and I don't believe I have ever heard you address this board, and I am looking forward to it. Go ahead.
My name is Frank Flor, senior, live at 43rd Carrot Oak Highway. I've lived in Moyoc for eighty years, and they've had that problem with that flooding in that area before they fixed 168 and since they've fixed 168. It's been there for eighty years, so y'all are going to have a hard problem trying to get rid of that flooding in that area.
I would agree with you. And quite frankly, here is the conundrum and the problems that, at least in my estimation since I've been on the board, the problems are significant, they've been there since my grandfather and his father was a boy. The issues that led us up to the workshops and ultimately into this final discussion here, or not final, but this discussion here, has been quite simply, I think, maybe I'm oversimplifying things, when we looked into it, there was option A, B, C, D, and there may have been an E. Each one were incrementally more expensive but did more to mitigate the problem. The issue that I think we ran into as a board is there was resistance in Moyoc by some to agree to the cost it would take to address these problems, and I think that's why it's stymied. And the reason I say this, I don't want you guys to come home and go home and think that we're going to have another meeting and we're going to resolve this. It's going to take choices, discussion, and decisions by the people of Moyoc to determine to what degree do they want to address this problem. Now, we have a board stood up and we have good people on it, and I look forward to this, to discussions, but ultimately, it's, in my considered opinion, it's ultimately going to end up in your hands because to Mr. Commissioner Beaumont's point, I don't think, certainly I don't either, I'm not interested in imposing a tax on a group of people if they're not willing, if they don't want it. Whether or not we got the authority, I just, I'm not interested in doing that. So ultimately, it's going to be your decision to determine what level of mitigation or the necessary addressing of this problem. And I'm sorry to digress like this, but I just don't want you good folks to go home and think that there's going to be a magic arrow or something, there's going to be, that we're going to be able to wave a wand and whatever. So with that being said, I guess we have some direction going forward. There was a motion, it was seconded, and it was passed. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. My record shows that Commissioner Beaumont made a motion for denial. It was sent by Ms. Gilbert and by a vote of six to one, it passed, with Commissioner Hall being the dissenting vote.
Thank you. Now, with that, I would ask for a five-minute recess. We've been going for about three hours. And thank you, folks, for coming out. Don't hesitate to contact us and talk to us and help us, that's what we're here for. All right.
Did you get...
I did. Call the order, call the order, please. All right. Call the meeting, the order, let's move forward. Next item on the public hearing is public hearing pursuant to GS 158-7.1 on a performance agreement between the Curry Tuck Chamber of Commerce and Curry Tuck County. I'll turn this over to Mr. McCray.
I think I was just going to make an introductory comment about why we're having a public hearing on this matter, and then the county manager is going to actually present the contract prior to you opening the public hearing. This is unusual for us to have a public hearing on a performance agreement, but that's because the general statutes changed October 20th, when the governor signed into law a statute adopted by the General Assembly during its last session. Under Chapter 158 of the general statutes, counties have the authority to make appropriations for economic development purposes, and you have had public hearings in the past as required by the statute at the time, that called for a public hearing when you were considering entering into incentive agreements with possible business or industry that wanted to locate in the county. The General Assembly now has changed the law such that any appropriation of monies to be used for economic development purposes requires a public hearing, whether it's for the purchase of real property, whether it's for incentives, or whether it's for any other matters. Because this contract contemplates economic development, and you are entering into the agreement under your authority for economic development purposes, it does now under the new law require a public hearing.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, you have before you tonight in your agenda package a draft performance agreement. The county staff in conjunction with the staff of the chamber, we've had several meetings whereby we have sat down and talked about different tasks and different things of value that the chamber could provide for Curry Tuck County. And what you have for you tonight for the public hearing is a two-year performance agreement in the amount of, in the first year, $34,500, and in year two, $40,000, to accomplish what we have defined as seven distinct tasks with defined deliverables associated with each one of those tasks. The first task is we will completely transfer the bi-local program to the Chamber of Commerce, where they will operate 100% of that program. The Chamber of Commerce will hold at a minimum three business education classes for our small businesses in our community. They will host and promote three real estate council meetings. These are ad hoc committees that were put together whereby we have worked with our land developers, our real estate businesses in the county regarding the UDO, regarding different items of interest to help encourage and foster that relationship. They must continue the partners in business promotion program. They must have a cooperative business assessment survey and data gathering. This is a recommendation that came from the Economic Development Board. There's an interest to start moving forward to the creation of a comprehensive business databank, and it was believed that the chamber could provide a valuable service in that endeavor. Now, the chambers agreed to provide digital sharing of the various different databases and announcements and various different pieces that they develop. And the last one is to continue to conduct annually a job fair. And so for the performance of those seven tasks, again, the county is agreeing to pay in year one, $34,500, and $40,000 in year two. It is staff has reviewed this, and it is our recommendation to the board that you would consider adoption of that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Scanlon, is this in addition to the money that's already been given to the chamber? Is this...
This will be the money...
The only money, okay. I just want to clarify that.
Historically, we've had an agreement with the chamber. This is for the, the first year is the 2015-16 fiscal year, so as of right now, no money has transferred to the chamber until the agreement is actually executed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. When did you say the law changed?
The General Assembly adopted the amendment to the, to Chapter 158 during its last session, and the governor signed the legislation into law on or about October 20th.
Of this year?
Yes.
And in the past, we've never had a written contract per se?
Yes, we have.
Well, we've had a written contract.
There was no requirement at that time for there to be a public hearing on the expenditure of funds under that agreement, or those agreements.
And did we take at that time also, I guess, tell the chamber on July 1st when this would have gone through to cease? Or did we ask them to continue on in good faith, or...
No, they were not under contract with the county as of June 30th, so there was no, there were no services provided to the county nor any transfer of county funds to the chamber, and will not be until this agreement is approved.
Okay, so otherwise, we paid them up to date, we just didn't hire any more things from them? Is that correct?
Well, the contract, the last contract ended under the terms of that contract on June 30th of 2015.
So we owe them no more money at all?
That's correct.
Because we didn't have a new contract?
That's correct.
Okay.
Let me clarify that. So from July 1st till now, the chamber has not done any work on behalf of the county for the bi-local?
There is no, there is no contract between the chamber and the county for them to do any work for the county. I do not know what the chamber may have done or been doing, or under the impression of what they might do, but there was no contract between the county and the chamber.
Neither verbal nor implied, because you guys were ongoing meetings with them. Is that correct?
The contract ended under the terms of that agreement on June 30th, therefore, there was no further contractual relationship between the chamber or the county.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I can address some of these questions if you'd like me to.
I want to open public comment in a moment, right now, it's, and you'll be welcome to come up, but not right now.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. As a business owner, I have seen and have used some of the services of our local chamber. Not all chambers, you know, do well to help the community, and I will say that, you know, our chamber has received some accolades. They do do a lot for businesses, they've got a lot of services they promote out there. It's an active group, the staff in there works hard, and I just want to give them a little bit of accolades from some experience I've had with the chamber. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I just, just maybe to clarify the question that Commissioner Hall asked, the public hearing that we're getting ready to have is the new requirement that was passed on October 20th of this year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Preceding that and for decades, well, let me ask this, does this contract satisfy Article 5, Section 2, Subparagraph 2 of North Carolina State Constitution as it speaks to use of public funds?
In my opinion, it does because it calls for the expenditure of public money for a public purpose and for a purpose that the county itself could perform.
And it complies with General Statute 153A, 449?
That's correct.
And it's also in conformity with Dennis v. Raleigh. I think that was 72, 1972, North Carolina Supreme Court that set forth some guidelines or guidelines relative to county's obligation relative to public monies and their expenditures?
That was the late 1960s North Carolina Supreme Court case that evaluated the challenge for the city of Raleigh to expend monies in that particular case to its Chamber of Commerce for certain services. The Supreme Court determined that that was an appropriate expenditure of public monies for a public purpose because, among other things, it provided for specific services that were to be provided by the chamber, and secondly, it provided for accountability of how those public monies were spent. That is deemed to be a good guideline as for units of local government since that time to follow in addition to the statutory and constitutional authority that has been since granted to local government. And so we have incorporated those type of provisions to assure that these public funds are spent for a public purpose.
And as you, as you just previously answered, this contract that we have before us tonight satisfies those requirements?
In my opinion, it does, yes.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing done, I'll open the public hearing. I have nobody signed up, but Mr. Bass indicated that he would like to speak, if you'd like to come forward. Name and address, please.
Josh Bass, President of the Curry Tuck Chamber. I live at 103 Egret Cove in Moyoc. And Ms. Gilbert, to your question, we have received one payment, it was for last fiscal year's contract, and this fiscal year, we received that on Friday through direct deposit. We just got notice from the Finance Department today, that was deposited on Friday. And Mr. O'Neill, to your question, we have continued to work on the bi-local, not under contract, but on the bi-local campaign in good faith because we do believe in the program. It's a wonderful program. Of course, as many of you know, from the beginning and inception of the program, we collect quarterly receipts. The first quarter, we collected around 35,000 receipts. This past quarter, the total was 87,000, so I think you've seen the program continue to grow and flourish. The county, of course, I understand, does not see the bi-local fitting really into the mission of the Tourism Department, they feel that it really is better served at the chamber. And I think we agree with that. I think the chamber is happy to take it on, I think it's been a very good program and beneficial program to all businesses in the county. The contract before you this evening, we just became aware of this afternoon on the agenda packet, so I've only had a few hours to review it. There are a few points that we would ask you to consider this evening in the contract. Item one, we would ask for the full amount budgeted of $40,000, as we have been, as Mr. O'Neill brought up, been working on some of the bi-local items. Item two, we would ask, and we had asked this, that for some of the classes that the county would, and this doesn't necessarily need to be in the contract, but there can be an understanding, that we'd be allowed to advertise those classes in the Focus Magazine that the county puts out. We've done that in the past with some of the different classes that we offer on how to start a business, and they've been very successful advertised that way. You have residents of Knott's Island or Corolla that sometimes are harder for us to get to. Plus, our typical audience at the chamber, the emails we have, would be businesses that are already in business, where with a lot of that startup business, we're trying to get at businesses that are going to open their doors. So we want to get to a lot of new businesses. So if the county would be willing to help us by putting some of those advertisements in the Focus Magazine, that would certainly be very helpful. We had asked on item one that the bi-local contract, or bi-local portion of the contract be at the chamber's discretion. There are some bullet points there, we just would want the flexibility to do the program. Of course, we don't have the manpower, staff-wise or fiscally, of the Tourism Department, but I think we can take the program, streamline it, as we've met with the county manager, there are some things, some of the advertising requirements, possibly website that the county has said that they're not necessarily interested in continuing. So we would just want that flexibility in item one to streamline that, which I think we can do, and I think we can do for the benefit of all of the citizens. And then the very last paragraph, we ran that by our CPA this afternoon, they had some concern with the language, just on onerous reporting requirements for the chamber. And so we would ask that the language on page two, second paragraph, that references the financial reports, that we are very happy with that language on page two, that the detailed amount of public funds received and how it is used, and the most recently filed IRS Form 990, that paragraph that ends financial reports, that is the language that we had requested. So certainly, I'm happy to... IRS Form 990. That paragraph that ends financial reports, that is the language that we had requested. So certainly, I'm happy to take any questions or comments, but that would be it for us. And we certainly look forward to partnering continually with the county.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Bass? Hearing none. I'm a little confused, Mr. Scanlon. I thought we were here for approval of the contract.
I am certainly confused also and caught off guard by some of the comments Mr. Bass has made. He was advised some time ago that this would be on tonight's agenda. In fact, he and I have conversed over a series of emails, and I'm under the impression that we had concurrence on the thirty-four thousand five hundred. We've actually been conversing about that, so I don't, his request for forty thousand tonight is news to me. I thought we had concurrence. I certainly, on the other items he brought up, I do not see an issue with providing them access to the Focus for them to continue to advertise their classes. And he is correct. We did discuss the items under number one, giving them flexibility if they so choose to either streamline the websites or go in a different direction, that that certainly would be okay with the county staff.
And I would interject that from comments received from Mr. Bass a week or so ago, there is a change to provide in the second sentence, as agreed upon by all parties at the Chamber of Commerce, for a run, the bi-local campaign at the Chamber of Commerce's discretion. So we had already provided for and added that flexibility within that provision. The other piece, I didn't understand if that was to be a modification to the financial records language, but that language comes, at least as to the definition of financial books and records, is the exact language from the general statutes that any nonprofit receiving more than five thousand dollars from a unit of local government would be required to provide any member of the public upon their request.
I think that's 58A, 451, is that?
153A, I think that's somewhere in there.
I don't know. There seems to be enough of a request now for significant enough changes. Do we need to table this so that it can be resolved? I mean, quite frankly, I was prepared to move forward and go with it because it was my understanding and representation to me that the contract had been approved, discussed, and was ready to move forward.
No, sir. As of Wednesday, we emailed Mr. Scanlon asking for a final version of the contract and have not received one until we saw it in the agenda packet this afternoon. Yes, we got a copy of it. Now, correct?
I would go beyond clerical. I mean, I think they're even disputing the value of the contract, which is, again, that is a surprise to me. That is not the language that we have been discussing for some time now. So if this is truly the chamber's position, Mr. Chairman, I would absolutely recommend that you table it and let the two staffs get back together and resolve these differences.
Now, I wasn't going to bring up the point, but I'll ask now. Has the county expended any funds since the termination of this contract to date on bi-local?
I believe we have. I believe our Tourism Department continues to provide, up until the execution of this particular agreement, the bi-local program was managed by, a portion was managed by the Tourism Department and a portion was maintained by the Chamber of Commerce. And I believe both entities have continued to provide that service up until, as of today. So yes, the Tourism Department has continued to provide cost and staff time to doing our portion of the program.
Okay, is there anyone else? I had no one signed up for public comment.
Well, I guess my question is, what's the big disagreement? I think they just hammered out what the issue was, and the only thing that's in question is payment for the past six months of work they've done. That's the only thing I see that is not resolved. Can you tell me what is not resolved other than that?
I think the question is, and now here we are, we're right in the middle. We've had several, I didn't take notes, but we had several questions. It seems like some of them have already been resolved, but the thing that I've keyed on is the county manager's recommendation because of the dispute in the value of the contract, that that be resolved. That's what I'm hearing.
And the board can resolve that tonight? We can approve what is before us, or you can change it?
I don't know that the board has the ability to determine the value of a contract. I don't. I certainly don't.
When you vote tonight, you're determining the value.
Well, if we postpone this, no disbursements will be made to the chamber until an agreement is made, correct?
That is correct.
And that would put us out, you know, until we can bring it back to the table.
Your next meeting is scheduled for January 4th, and so if you were to continue it, we would bring it back to you, January 4th. Again, I don't think there's a dispute with any of the language in the contract. It's just that up until a few seconds ago, I felt like, and I think I have emails to point, that the chamber had concurred with the value of the contract at thirty-four thousand five hundred. That seems to be the only discretion, but this is the first I'm hearing that now they have a concern about that value.
Well, I would suggest that the only value that I'd seen on this contract in the earlier forms was in the amount of forty thousand dollars for this year. So I'm surprised with the packet as well that the value of that contract has changed. I guess the thing that I find disturbing, and I understand being in compliance with General Statute 158, Tax 7.1, is, and for those that are watching on TV and that are attending, if you are a nonprofit organization and want to do business with the county, you're going to expect to have the exact and identical treatment. So, fair warning.
That is correct.
So with that said, you know, when our budget was passed, there was an amount of money that was set aside for the chamber. And, you know, it has gone on, the discussions relative to this have gone on for an inordinate amount of time and have used up and consumed a lot of the county's resources. And that's not necessarily on any one entity's fault or, you know, but with the law change, you know, certainly, we're on some new terrain and new ground tonight. But, you know, I think, I guess the question, you know, and there's a comment in general business that says, you know, if you don't have a contract for something, it doesn't exist. So, you know, that too is a lesson for folks to learn. But the reality is, in services, you know, were we under an obligation to say, you know, cease and desist? Were we aware that they were performing services that were covered ostensibly under this contract, which was a moving target? And so does the county, in fact, own some degree of responsibility? And in reference to Commissioner O'Neill's point, I would suggest that the chamber was operating in good faith, and certainly, it warrants further discussion.
Mr. Scanlon, a question for you. What was the basis for the difference between the thirty-six thousand dollars this year and the forty thousand dollars next year?
When we were negotiating the terms and condition of Task One in this contract, the county staff had put together that we had incurred, I believe it was twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars annually to do Task One. And so that number was put out to the chamber, and Mr. Bass responded back to the county, being since that work was not done for the first quarter, that we took one-fourth of the amount of the twenty-two five hundred, and we just subtracted it from the forty thousand. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I have emails to document that conversation in a concurrence, that the value of the contract should be thirty-four thousand five hundred.
So the chamber admitted to you that they did not perform the service for that period of time? Is that what you're saying? I'm asking.
Historically, both parties had a role to, that they performed under the bi-local.
Understand.
From what I'm hearing from Mr. Bass, since July 1st till today, they've continued to perform that portion which they have historically performed, and Currituck County has continued to perform that which we historically performed.
Understand, but how did we get to the thirty-six thousand dollars? You just, you said that that was deducted because someone said they didn't perform it.
Because it was envisioned that this agreement, as mentioned, has been taken a significant amount of time to negotiate. If this agreement had been put in place July 1st, the chamber would have taken on a hundred percent of the responsibility to the bi-local. Not only what they have historically done, but they also would start taking on the county portion that we have done. We valued our portion at twenty-two thousand five hundred.
So this contract is not going, this contract is not going to run concurrent from today for one full year?
The first year will not. It'll run from when this board signs it until June 30th, and then the second year would be, yes, and so we, yes, sir.
So maybe only eight months that you're paying for the first year, where you pay for twelve months in the second year?
Yes, sir. And that's why it's forty thousand second year, is it would be a full twelve months of performing the service. So it's being prorated the first year.
I keep coming back to the same thing, July 1st contract, that the law didn't change till October, three months later. What happened in three months that we didn't have a contract? And if we're both performing it, and I understand what you're saying about the money, I'm just trying to understand what happened.
You know, there has been, we've had written contracts, I've seen them year to year, and for love me, why this took so long for the county to get this contract in place? You know, six months is gone now. I don't know why this didn't start in the springtime and be running for July 1st. I mean, you know, it's, and now we're asking to go on for another, you know, another month here to get this thing resolved, and I just, it just baffles me why it took so long.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a decision if we are done with public comment.
Public comment has been closed, so the board can entertain a motion.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we accept the contract or adopt the contract or agreement as written with the added pieces on the advertisement in the Focus effective tonight.
And, okay, what, I'll second that. You're talking about?
As it's written currently now.
Okay, I'll second that, yeah.
And with thirty-four thousand, not the full forty the first year?
Right, as it's written, prorated for this year and then a full twelve months for next year.
Okay, we have a motion and a second before the board. Any discussion?
Yeah, so we're not going to acknowledge the work that has been done before now in good faith?
I believe the county manager spoke to the work that has traditionally been done before, and, see, here we are. This is kind of an ambush because, to my understanding, and I thought everybody else's understanding, the contractor is ready to move forward. As brought to us, apparently, there's been emails, the agreement, I mean, I think the county manager has said twice that there's been communication and there was agreement all the way up until, I assume, this meeting.
Yes, sir.
And now we're, the question's been asked and answered relative to the difference between the thirty-six thousand and the forty.
Until the Board of Commissioners takes action on it, there is no agreement. The Board of Commissioners' action is the agreement.
Mr. O'Neill, I would just like to, I mean, I would just like to interject. I mean, for the sake of fairness, if this was a question and a concern before now, why has it not been addressed by now? We wouldn't be sitting here discussing this. If Josh in the chamber had an issue with the amount of money before today or earlier today, we wouldn't be sitting here discussing this. It should have, we should have dealt with it, been finished with it, like I was hoping we were going to do and be finished. I mean, I'm like Mr. Payne, but I'm tired of dealing with it. I'm ready to get done with it.
I would like to finish it as well, but unless I'm misunderstanding Mr. Bass or the county manager, you put it on the thing, you thought you had an agreement. Mr. Bass saying he just saw the final draft today, is that correct?
Correct.
So you worked out a good agreement, it's just there were a couple terminology things. And I guess, Mr. Bass, the question comes in, had you already agreed to the thirty-four thousand?
We had discussed it. The chamber board is one of them.
If you could come back up, please.
We had discussed it. The chamber board is the one that ultimately agrees on our behalf. So this, if you approve it tonight, we'll have to go to the chamber board.
So the two staffs have agreed on the thirty-four thousand five hundred?
We have discussed it.
Okay, called a question. We have a motion before us and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No.
So that motion failed on a three, three to four, is that correct?
That's what I have, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm going to substitute a motion that we recognize the first six months' work and fund it at the full amount.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second before the board. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right, it passed, and the next item will be, thank you, Mr. Bass. New business, appointments for the Land Use Planning Committee. Mr. Woody.
Mr. Chairman, we, the staff, put out a advertisement for volunteers to participate on our Land Use Plan Steering Committee. The county is in the process of updating the land use plan, which you heard Mr. Palmer speak earlier about the last plan, which was completed in 2006. This plan will update our land use policies, which, as you know, and as I mentioned tonight, frequently guide the recommendations that are before you from the staff. It's a document that the private investment community relies on to make their decisions on land acquisition and development. It's also a document that citizens should be able to rely on in terms of understanding and how development impacts their use and enjoyment of their property. Very important process, and so what we're doing tonight is with recommendations from the Board of Commissioners, along with some staff recommendations, we're asking you to appoint this steering committee who will serve as facilitators of this process. So there'll be a group of folks that provide information and background, kind of a sounding board for the staff to bring forward a new land use plan for your consideration. Now, of course, as we do that, I want to point out that one important thing is broader community input. So this isn't the committee that makes the decisions. This is a committee that does a lot of kind of behind-the-scenes works, but staff fully anticipates having a number, multiple community meetings in different areas of the county and giving all our citizens ample opportunity to participate. That'll be through in-person meetings, that'll be through survey instruments, that'll be through online, use of surveying, social media, websites, et cetera. So this is just the first step in that process, and of course, staff recommends approval of this committee, and I hope the board will support that and move this process forward. I can answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a recommendation that we move these names forward with an additional person to be appointed from Corolla for Mr. Idlet. You have two people from the northern Off-Road Beach area and one from Corolla. So that's my motion.
I would second your motion. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have discussion, sure do. I will appoint someone from Knott's Island, since we don't have anyone from Knott's Island, as you and I have discussed. And fine, if the board's choice is to give me another appointment from Corolla, I certainly will make that happen too. But I want to keep it open that if I find an appointment from Knott's Island, that that is my choice to do.
Well, I still am going to ask for another appointment to Corolla since the North Beaches have to, because the folks in Corolla, or did I say Knott's Island or Corolla? The folks in Corolla are going to expect to have the same amount of representation as the North Beach. And I'm fine with Mr. Idlet making that recommendation, and if he wants to appoint someone from Knott's Island as well, that's fine as well, but that's my motion.
And my second would also agree with Mr. Idlet.
We can make that happen.
I just had a comment. Did we, Mr. Woody, did we discuss that the steering committee could be, the amounts could be adjusted as needed if we felt like it, to make sure we had good representation?
Yeah, there's no, there's no formal number that this committee can be, so you can certainly, as you form this committee, you can add more or you can have less. That's at the discretion of the board.
So theoretically, we could have twenty people if we wanted to.
Correct.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. President, I saw where it says ten to fourteen. We had thirteen, I believe, on the small area plan, Mr. Woody. Was that correct?
We did. We had thirteen, and then there was a planning board member that also participated, so we really had fourteen on that committee.
So we're within the same reason of other groups that we've done?
Yeah, this committee right now has eleven people as proposed, and if you added one from, additional one from Corolla, and an additional one from Knott's Island, that would make it thirteen, which is reasonable.
I have another question. Is there an attendance expectation?
Yes, there is. We don't have a formal policy on what would result in dismissal of a committee member, but we are, once the committee's formed, staff will obviously reinforce that you have to participate and be a part of this, and we're going to put together kind of a handbook for the committee members that detail the expectation. So if the board would like something more formal, we can add that. So if the board would like something more formal, we can add that.
Well, the last time we did land use committee, there was not a participation expectation, and that was brought to my attention, so I just...
Yeah, we can create that as part of the guidelines for the committee, certainly. That way, before they accept the invitation of appointment, they'll know what the expectation is from the county.
Question. We have a motion before us and a second, but we've had some additional qualifications or, and then...
Two people.
And so...
I amended my motion to allow for another person from Corolla or Knott's, and Knott's Island, so it'd bring it to 13.
Okay.
I agree that my second would accept that.
Okay, so the board's clear on the motion before it?
Got a valid motion and...
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The next new business will be Corolla Greenway Construction Project Recommendation of Award. I think this will go to Mr. Scanlon.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a project we have been working on for, it seems quite a long time. This is the Greenway, the multi-use path in Corolla. It is a three-mile path that starts or ends at the food line in Corolla and goes south to the boundary of Ocean Sands A and Ocean Sands T. It's approximately three miles. This project was put out for bid. You have in your agenda package the recommendation from the engineer of record on this project. The low bidder with alternatives was Hatchell Concrete Inc. in the amount of $1,581,657. This project is funded and supported out of occupancy tax, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions the board might have.
Mr. Chairman, if you, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Scanlon, can you explain the difference between the certified and the certified with alternatives? Because it appears that the one who won the contract was a little bit lower or a little higher than the second place.
Well, both columns are certified.
Right.
The difference is, in the project, there was some additional amenities that we would like to have considered within the project, but we weren't sure within the budget parameters if we would have enough money to afford those. So those were added to the project as bid alternates, and then the Board of Commissioners are at your discretion which one of those alternates you select to stay within budget. Because we've got a good base bid, I mean, this is actually under what we were anticipating, staff is making a recommendation that we actually move forward with those bid alternates. The vast majority of the bid alternates is a higher level of treatment on your pedestrian crosswalks, on the side streets, and on NC-12, doing a higher level of embellishment on those to make them stand out a lot more. It was some additional benches along the path. It was items like that that would improve the path, but it wasn't critical to actually just the concrete. And again, you do those to make sure that you've got the money to afford those. And so we're making a recommendation that we accept the bid with the alternatives.
I understand, thank you.
Any other questions?
All righty. Just how much under projection are we? Approximately.
Taking the base bid plus alternates, the engineer's estimate, we are about $275,000 under what the engineer estimate was for the project.
Wow, that's good.
That's good news.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion to approve this?
Absolutely.
I'd like to make that motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the motion before us? Aye.
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 Opposed? Next item for, then the new business is the recommendation of award for the softball fields at Currituck Community Park. Dan, also, I believe that is yours.
Yes, sir, that's mine also. This is a project, another project that we have been working on, and the scope has increased a little bit over from where it was initially. But this is a project to construct three baseball softball fields, concession stands, bathrooms, picnic shelters, the parking area, paths. It also includes a skateboard park that we were required to replace with the Southern Parallel Taxi Way. We'll be taking out the skateboard park we currently have under the agreement. We were supposed to replace that. That's in this project. There's an Alpine climber tower that originally was budgeted down at the CCRC, and we're moving this project up here. So it has kind of grown in scope. This project was put out to bids. You have the engineer of records recommendation in your agenda package, and we're asking for approval with the low bidder on this, which is AR Chesson, in the amount of $4,906,342. This, too, is supported by oxy tax, and it is budgeted. I will bring one thing to your attention. When you look later on and you'll see a project ordinance for the overall budget for this project, you'll see a number that is closer to 5.5. And so if I can take a second to explain the difference between these two bids. When we did this, when we did the multipurpose fields, Musco is the lighting contractor. We can get a better deal buying the lights directly from Musco than going through a general contractor and having them purchased, marked up, and installed. So the lighting systems for the baseball softball fields were removed from the project, and we will directly purchase those from the contractor. We also have some utility costs, NC Power bringing power to it, so there are some additional costs on the project. So the total budget for the entire project would be 5.5 million, and that amount is in your budget, and I believe you have a budget amendment coming to you for project ordinance to cover that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, this money has already been appropriated in the normal budgeting process?
Yes, sir. We've actually had a sinking fund for a couple of years. We have systematically been putting money aside every year, and we've accumulated the funds necessary to undertake this project.
And the North Carolina general statutes allows this money to be spent in this manner?
Yes, sir, it does.
That was my question, it's good. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Idlet made the motion to approve. Commissioner Gilbert, second. Any discussion?
Just one quick question. On the total bid for AR Chesson, there was a mathematical error in there, but they agreed to go ahead and just do it for that. Same as up in Columbia, correctly?
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, with no more discussion, all in favor of the motion before the board? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item we have is resolution authorizing sole source purchase of ambulance chassis remounts. I believe this is Mr. McCree's.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as we did at a recent meeting, you are authorized under law to not go through the formal bid process if you make a determination that a contract provider is able to provide, among other things, equipment to the county that is compatible or provides for greater efficiency in use by county employees. In this particular case, the Fire and EMS Department has requested a sole source purchase of three ambulance chassis on which there will be remounted ambulance boxes and associated equipment and apparatus. The department says that it believes this to be essential for sole purchase because the vendor has done similar work on other ambulances in recent years, and it helps with their crews being able to move from unit to unit seamlessly and recognizing the equipment as they do move from those units as needed.
Any questions?
I will say, this is a standard practice, and it's a good way to get new, I say new, refurbished and renovated equipment for price of a used stuff, so I think it's a good purchase.
Okay, no further questions. Board will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Commissioner Payne made the motion to approve. Commissioner Hall seconded it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimously passed. Next item's going to be board appointments. This is reappointments to the Joint Nursing Domincillary Community Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to reappoint Ms. Diane Bray, Ms. Barbara Courtney, Ms. Florence Gaff, Ms. Rosalie Rose, and Ms. Linda S. Daniels.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner O'Neill and Idlet. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number two, and that's a game board appointment by Ms. Gilbert.
I'd like to appoint Rick Bell from Moayak for the game board.
I'm sorry.
Rick Bell for the game board.
You need a second? A second?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Gilbert and a second by Commissioner Idlet. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next item will be the consent agenda.
We'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Idlet, seconded by Commissioner Gilbert. Any discussion? Hearing, none.
Just one question. Road abandonment petition, Water Lily. Mr. O'Neill, would you know anything? Do you know about that?
1405 Water Lily Road.
I can speak to this, having spoken with Peter Bishop, the economic developer, who has kind of helped him with this.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
This is the old Fish Camp property, you may remember. The owner of that property, my understanding, has requested that the county request DOT to remove this portion of, I guess, it's still called Water Lily Road, but it was the old road, original road.
Oh, okay. Okay, you're talking about a gondola.
Yes, so to be removed from state maintenance. And then the county, assuming DOT, the Board of Transportation does that, we will come back to this board for your process to close and abandon the road.
I believe that this has already been done once before, because...
Well, we kind of, we're looking at this on Friday and wondering whether maybe it had not been done before, but...
Because I remember when it came before us before, and it was approved, and after it was approved, it was realized that we had closed a piece of road where people could go, where the old bridge was in Fish.
That was the old bridge, Terminus.
Yeah, and I believe this has already been done.
Well, that was our question. We were looking at secondary road maps on Friday. It appeared there is no longer a secondary road number attached to this particular piece of old Water Lily Road.
Is all that property longer owned by the same person?
The piece, as you see on the map there, the piece from the canal about midway up is owned by one individual, and then the rest of it is owned by another.
So we're not doing anything to land like that one person's property, are we?
No, in fact, they've requested this.
Okay.
I would just submit, I believe we've already done it, and I would...
Seems to me like I remember something about that years ago.
About if I ask if we pull that off and let the attorney...
So move.
...relook at that.
I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion. I approve the consent agenda, removing item number four.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Commissioners' report. Commissioner Beaumont?
Nothing this evening.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes, the senior center had their craft show, and it was a huge success, folks. Thanks to everybody who came out, everybody who went and saw it. The high school had its, with the Ruattens, had its craft show, which was a huge success. And again, 80-some-odd booths were out there, a lot of people out there. Again, I'd like to thank you for participating, folks. And last but not least, I sit on the College of the Admirals Board. I'm a trustee, and that includes JTP NAP. We work hand in hand. So, folks, remember one thing. Our kids are the most important thing that we have at this holiday season, so give them a hug when you get home. Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Commissioner Idlet?
I, my wife and I have had the pleasure to go to the Whaling Club Saturday evening, I believe it was. They had a Christmas caroling and that type of thing. The kids from the Waves Charter School there put on a little sing-along, and then also our high school chorus group was there. And, man, it was some good singing. It was a little too cold for me, but it was some beautiful singing and Tamara, I think she's out there somewhere, she, she done, her and her staff done an excellent job of putting this thing on, and kudos. The only thing that I would like to see is, and Tamara, I'll talk to you, if you need some funds, I think we need to get us a PA system to put out there for events like that, that you've got, that's dedicated to you. How about that? And other than that, as Mr. Hall said, you know, let's all remember the reason for the season, and it was, you know, the birth of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. I want to wish each and every one a happy, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and may everyone's holidays be blessed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill?
I would like to ditto what was just said. There are a lot of organizations out there that are working with the folks that are needy. There's a lot of Angel Tree needs out there that's, I think some of our local churches are trying to meet them, but I know social service has kids that are in need of different things. You know, we spent a couple Thursdays ago being thankful for all that we have and all that we've been blessed with for the last year, and now we're going to spend the next three weeks asking for more. So let's take a little bit of time and think about those that are less fortunate, and to everyone out there, I wish you a blessed and Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Payne?
A few things. I just wanted to compliment the individuals organizing the Christmas parade at Extension Center. I've heard a lot of positive feedback. A lot of people were out there. Heard it was a big success from everyone who I spoke to about it, so just, you know, kudos to those folks there. And as Commissioner O'Neill stated, too, we have a lot to be thankful for, and we've also lost a lot of good people in our communities over the years with cancer and vehicle accidents and just a bunch of horrors. So just keep those individuals in your prayers this holiday season. Remember our troops overseas. We have a lot going on in this world right now with a lot of stuff that's, you know, we've got to be thankful that we've got individuals out there fighting for our freedom, and we just need to remember them in this holiday season as well. And again, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and God bless everyone out there. And Currituck County is a great county. I'm glad I grew up here, and I'm glad to serve in this county, and thank you.
Mr. Gilbert?
First and foremost, I want to thank everybody that participated in the gobbler jogger for Currituck Kids. I just found out Saturday that we netted close to $18,000 on that fundraiser, and it was the sponsors, it was the folks that, you know, stepped out of their comfort zone and contributed to the Currituck Kids. And all of those funds stay inside of Currituck County. We have very low overhead because of the board members that serve on it and the volunteers. So I just, I was ecstatic. I kept asking, Ginger Robinson shared that with me, and she said, "We netted 17,000." I was like, "1,700?" She's like, "17,000." I said, "1,700,000?" She said, "Actually, I got another check, so we're over 18,000 for that event." So I just want to thank each and every person that contributed, the sponsors, the hard work that was done, because all of that money is now going to be put into the endowment fund so that we can continue giving scholarships to Currituck Kids, folks that grow up and, like yourself. I was not blessed to be born and live in Currituck County. I chose to move here, so I'm an outsider that moved in, so sorry, guys, but I, too, I love this county, I love the people here, and it just gratifies everything that I, in my being, to give back to the community. So I just thank each and every one of you and wish you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. I'd like to echo the sentiments and the comments, my fellow commissioners. Be careful out there. Well, this is the coming to the close of the first meeting that I have chaired as the chairman, and I guess about the best I can say is nobody died. And again, Merry Christmas. And with that, I will ask the county manager for his report.
Nothing, I thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yeah. Next item before the board will be the public comment. I have two people signed up. I will ask that you keep your, the time limit is five minutes, and that's already established by ordinance. Ms. Mary Etheridge?
My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846 Shawboro Road in Shawboro. On December the 9th, 2011, the Board of Commissioners voted to put a junkyard in my backyard. They did not listen to their own professional planning staff, their planning board, their Board of Adjustments, the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources, or even their own attorney. They went against their own governing principles in approving a junkyard in Shawboro. In the four years since that day, there have been many changes in my life. My biggest change has been retiring from the Board of Elections, where I served the citizens of Currituck for 33 years, first as a precinct official and then as the Director of Election for 15 years. During those 33 years, I had to be nonpartisan and basically have no opinion concerning how our local government was run. And yes, if the county had not wanted a junkyard in my neighborhood, I probably would have retired, gone home, and lived happily ever after. But there was another plan for me. Because I wanted the citizens of Currituck to know what had happened to me, I started attending and speaking at the commissioners' meetings. The commissioners recently moved the public comment to the end of the agenda and also changed their meeting time, but that has not stopped me. I'm still speaking. But soon I realized there was something bigger than my junkyard, and I asked myself, aren't these commissioners all registered Republicans? Do they not care that the North Carolina Republican preamble states, "It's not North Carolina a beacon for independence and freedom, and that independence finds its foundation in limited government and individual responsibility, that individuals are best suited to make their own decision about their welfare, that government governs best, that governs least, and allows individuals to follow their own path to prosperity? Do they not care that the 2015 report at the Platform Committee states that government should treat all citizens impartially and equally under the law? Yes, while attending the commissioners' meeting, I have learned that our local government is not treating all citizens impartially or equally under the law. I've learned our local government does not believe in limited government, and they certainly are not governing least. But you know what I have learned the most? Is that a citizen of our wonderful county, we should all be involved. Don't wait until something happens to you or your family. Know what is going on in Currituck County. Don't think you know what's going on or what someone wants you to think is going on. Know it firsthand. Become involved. So to my fellow citizens of Currituck County, I want to apologize for having to be kicked in the gut before I became involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge. Wendy Shannon.
Good evening again, commissioners. I'll make this brief since I already overran my three minutes before. I just wanted to speak also to the time change for public comment. I recognize that many meetings do run long, and I know that you all want to go home just the same as we do. So I appreciate the concern on that. However, 5 o'clock is a bit early, I think, and I would ask you at some point soon to reconsider, possibly 6 o'clock. Also, I'm given to understand one of the reasons for the change is so that some of the outlying folks can attend the meetings, such as from the Outer Banks and so forth. But I would question how many are coming now that the time has changed, and would it not be better served to accommodate one of their own suggestions, which was to have a remote video feed for anything that is not an official sworn testimony? That that would also accommodate more people attending on that side, as well as giving you the opportunity to still maintain a little bit of an earlier time. Thank you for your consideration, and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. I don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone here that would wish, that wishes to make a comment? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and entertain a motion to adjourn this board.
So moved. To go into the special meeting for the Tourism and Development Authority.
Yes. Upon adjournment of this meeting, we will then reopen. And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. This meeting is adjourned. I'd like now to open the meeting, Special Meeting for the Tourism and Development Authority. First item on the agenda is budget amendments, and Dan, I think that is yours.
Yes, sir. You have one budget amendment in your agenda package tonight. It actually accomplishes several items. I'm actually going to talk from the bottom up on this, the larger numbers to the bottom, the $219,000. This is a capital project that the board budgeted last fiscal year, that was started last fiscal year. It was in two phases. The second phase is underway now, and so what we're doing with this budget amendment is we're bringing forward those funds that were appropriated last year. We're bringing the balance forward to support that project. So that is not additional money, it's just an advancement, advancing amount that was budgeted last year. In the middle of the budget amendment, what you have is, we're seeing the utility cost at the Whalehead Club increase, so we're estimating a revised budget amount for that for the remainder of the year. And we are moving, historically, we have charged a portion of the lobbying contract, the OxyTax. We do have Outer Banks issues and concerns that they do help us with, so we're apportioning a piece of that contract to OxyTax. And the last one at the very top is, we have not had a vehicle that we were responsible for now, but the staff does have a vehicle that they use over in the property, and so we're budgeting some money for vehicle maintenance for that. And so I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have on the budget amendment.
Any questions? Hearing, no questions. I will ask for a motion.
So moved.
It's seconded.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Gilbert and Commissioner Beaumont. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item will be consideration of hours for operation of Whalehead Club. Tamara, I think that is yours.
I would like to propose to the TDA that we close the Whalehead to the public for January and the first two weeks in February. This is based on looking at attendance records at the Outer Banks Wildlife Center. Last year, for the whole month of January, they had 101 visitors to the center. I don't believe that that kind of attendance warrants having paid staff onboard over the months of January and those first two weeks in February. I did bring this proposal before the Tourism Advisory Board, and they concurred with that. During the close down, the staff will be working on the former retail area in the basement. We're going to turn that into a children's activity area so that we'll be ready for the new season. So we'll have some things for the children to do in the basement, including possibly a video game for the children, a wildlife game, and also a dress-up area so the kids can dress up in period costumes of that era, not only just the ladies' dresses, but also we're trying to recreate some of the hunting gear that was worn, so the children can dress up, have pictures taken with their parents. I think it'll be a lot of fun, and we're looking at one area, turning it into a craft room, so that the kids can actually do some crafts down in the basement. So I'd like to entertain that with the TDA and see if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Well, I'll just say, if they have 101 visitors at the Wildlife Center, that doesn't translate to 101 visitors to the Whalehead Trust. Maybe 10% of that, or to the Whalehead Club, are 20%, so it's really not many visitors during that period of time.
Yeah, didn't they have figures?
Yes, they gave me the attendance figures from last year.
They did?
They did.
What would they look like?
For January, it's about 101 visitors for the whole month.
Okay. That was to the Whalehead Club or to...
No, no, I'm sorry, to the Outer Banks Wildlife Center.
Right, but I say the Whalehead, they didn't keep...
The Whalehead was actually closed, and I was entertaining keeping it open, but when I looked at attendance figures for the entire park, it just didn't seem to warrant paying staff to be open for that, and we'll utilize that time in other ways.
Okay, so we're not really changing anything.
Not changing nothing. You just, yeah.
And I'd also like to bring before you, traditionally, and we did that this year, we have closed down the Whalehead on Sundays, and I believe that the attendance for the summer really warrants keeping the building open on Sundays, at least for the months of June, July, August, and September. So I would like for you to entertain that also, and keeping that open the whole week, seven days a week.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve requests as presented.
Second. Second that motion.
Have a motion and a second from Commissioner Idlet and Commissioner Gilbert. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing, none. I see no further business before this board. We'll entertain a motion for...
So moved.
Second.
Third.
You have a motion and a second? Seeing no...
And a third.
And a third. And hearing, no further discussion. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?